Uh, Resident Evil 4 remake where... Uh, actually I... I'll check some things. Uh, oh, the extra con. Uh... Okay, so I actually did unlock some stuff. Uh... So... Okay, Leon jacket model. Okay, so we get models for certain cases by completing certain... Root Hunnigan. Luis Serranavaro and Leon Sh... Got a bunch of these, actually. A merchant model, police officer's model, villager hatchet, village pitchfork, village knife, this Ramolotov. Granado, uh, Des Nucardo. I guess those are the enemies that are supposed to... Like... Root Hammer. Chainsaw villager. Uh... Taurus Mendes. That's the guy. I guess that's the guy that we met, but it's the what's his name guy. Uh... Dog, uh, cow, pigs, crow. TG09R. Bat? Viper rat. Black bass. Uh, chickens. W870. Okay, so ev- I guess everything in the extra con, there's a... We can, we can get everything as in kitchen knife, combat knife, I guess everything. So velvet blue, gemstones, spindle, uh, chicken eggs, flash grenade, hand grenade, belt pendant, pumppus, wagon, elegant mask. Uh, Leon concept art. Uh, Luis Serranavaro concept art, uh, even... Not sure. Okay, so everyone gets concept art as well. Chainsaw villager. Granado villagers. So much stuff that just for completing game. Hunter's Lodge, Village Square, Lakeside Settlement, abandoned factory basement, abandoned factory valley, village chief's manor. Uh, Club of Castellan, Salazar family insignia, token machine, blue medallion, and treasure chest. Uh, as I said, I'm not gonna buy any of these, cuz uh... GP, we need to use to pick up all the stuff anyway, but uh... Interesting that they have the... Let's... I, I wish they just unlocked it rather than having to spend money, uh, that, spend like the in-game currency. Um... Let's load... Uh... I usually pick load games to continue, only because I know it's gonna load from the previous. I wanna try and figure out what's wrong with my... Uh, I need to try and figure out what's wrong with my... Uh, inventory. For some reason, I can't put stuff in the thing. "Let us accept the gift. These ominous words, Leon's formidable attack, attack are vanish while trying to think about the true meaning behind them. Leon continues on in search passionately." So... Uh, we've just gone, we've just made our way through the town hall. Uh, one of the requests I need to do is find three vipers, which those are random things, so once I find those, I need to make sure I pick those up. I'm trying to figure out why I can't put certain things into the storage, because uh... Maybe you can only put weapons in the storage, but usually you would be able to put anything in the storage. You can put ammo, you can put anything. For some reason, I can't put any of that in there. So I'm gonna probably need to, uh... Invest in upgrading the case, because um, if, if it's gonna limit the amount that I can actually put in, I guess. So, last time I tried this, it was, it wasn't letting, nothing in the storage. Um... Let's try this again. Um... I, I just don't understand. Like, I wanna put some of the stuff that I don't need. Like, this viper, like, I don't need it right now. Um... But it's only gonna let me discard it. There must be a reason as to why I can't do that. What else is there as legions? Uh, I, uh, like, I wanna put this into the... Uh, thing, cuz I don't have anything else that I can use for it yet. Um... Gonna have to probably look this up, cuz for some reason I can't put certain things in the storage, which means if I can't put certain things in the storage, I'll need to get the upgrades. There must be a reason as to why. Cuz usually in the, uh, in the previous games, you could put anything to the storage. Um... I need to figure out what can, can't go into storage. Uh... So I've already used, like, here the items I didn't wanna use. Uh, need to figure out what goes into the storage. Manually store the equipment. Manually store unwanted pieces. It says manu- I can manually do it. I mean, I, like... It's not... There must be a reas- a, a way to... I, it can't be this complicated. It's a mo- there's no, there's not even an option to... Storage, selling to merchants, uh... Selling to the merchant, we don't need to sell anything, discard. I don't wanna discard anything either. Um... Well, I guess only certain items can be moved to storage. Uh... Generally, the player can only st- okay, so we can only store... Again, that really suck. I don't know why they changed that. "You can only store weapons, knives, attachments, guns, and first aid sprays, edibles, herbs, treasures, bullets, everything else can't be..." That, that, I don't know why they did that. Um... Cuz it's like, now I, now I'm at a point where it's like, I, oh, I, I don't wanna keep this. I want to, um... And like, this rifle ammo, it's saying that I can't store ammo either. Um, like, I don't have, uh, any, I don't have a rifle, so there's no reason for me to keep this. Um... So I guess, I guess we just can't... Uh, like, I, I don't wanna sell or discard any of them. Like, honestly, I just wanna leave it away. I don't wanna do that. Alright, so I guess I'm, I'm just stuck with the items that we have, so... I'm gonna have to invest in upgrading this, the case to get more space, cuz uh... Uh, we can't, uh, put anything else in. I need to go back and grab something, but I missed. Yeah, everything else here I can't, like... I have like a bunch of these, uh... Like, apparently we can store. Okay, we can store first aid sprays, but we can't store the other ones. Um... Can I store flash grenades? Uh, I can't even store flash grenades. Uh, okay, so I guess nothing can be stored unless it's... I, I don't know why they decided to do that, but okay. Alright, I guess we're just stuck like this then. Um... I'll have to head back. Again, for some reason, my map isn't loading. I need to head back and grab the, uh, like, I can head back and grab this first aid sprayer and then put it away. I need to keep that in mind. Alright, let's... Okay, so I, I guess that's, that's just what's gonna happen, fortunately. Uh... So obviously I need to find three vipers, but vipers can only be found randomly when breaking boxes, so, uh... Let's start with what we currently have. I just need to make sure I don't eat this viper. I need to keep sure, make sure I keep three of these. Um, so I can sell them to him. Uh... Okay, so... Uh, I have to do another, another, there's another, uh... Apparently at the end of the town hall, there's a... At the end of the town hall area, there should be a... Uh, thing. I don't have enough money to, I need, uh... I, I could sell treasures. I just don't wanna sell them right now, cuz I know that they can be worth more later. Alright, so this is the... Uh, viper. "A dear friend of mine is gravely ill, and I'd very much like to treat them to some delicious vipers before they pass. Is there a slank charm or willing to lend a hand? Please sell three vipers, area non-specified reward, uh, sp- spindle." Uh, actually, I... Since I have one right now, I'm thinking I can... I'm gonna save the game. I wanna see if... Um, I wanna see if selling one right here will count towards the progress and then selling it. Like, if I, can I sell one and then I'm back and still enough? Do I have to sell them all? It says he wants me to sell it, so if I sell... I go so it... This viper's left to sell to them, so let's see what happens. Hopefully that works. Uh, I could sell a bunch of stuff, but it's like, I don't wanna sell it, I think, because like... Okay, so that, we can sell it. So I didn't, I didn't need the space. I can sell it right now. Um... There is gonna be another... There is going to be another... Not sure what request that will be doing next. Uh, once we reach the next, uh, area. I know I could sell treasures, but I wanna make sure I keep the treasures. Uh, at least until I get to a point where it's like I have... Um... The church. I made it. Uh... Again, I, I don't know why it won't let me... But I guess certain things will not... We've got luck treasure and a treasure there. Um... The sky. Cuz I, I have to enter, to be able to enter into the map, I need to, um... When enter into the map, I need to, to, like... Uh... When enter into the map, I need to, uh... I can't push the, it might let me push the... The what? It might let me... Oh! Hello? I don't... Don't know what happened there. I don't know how he didn't see, see us, but uh... So I don't know how he didn't hear, um, us outside the thing, either. Uh... I need to, there's a request in the... Uh, in the middle of the graveyard, there's two gravestones with matching emblem to destroy, to destroy them. We, but we haven't got the request for it yet, however, we can, uh, destroy the... Um... Guessing I mean... Then we can shoot or melee them, so... Guessing that... Two matching ones. It, um... Right in the middle of the graveyard, there's two gravestones matching emblets. Destroy both and melee off them. Apparently, we, I think it might be these two here. I like how it told me that I've completed that, cuz I uh... Haven't even done that request. I don't know how I completed a... Uh, I guess I mean to, but I can head back, uh... Oh. Alright, uh... On the way through the graveyard, we completed merchant request early, which we've done. Now we're going, go, go around the right side. There's also a... Uh... I wonder if that upgraded something in here though, cuz... That's it. And that's viper. Okay, grave robber. Uh, "Those traitorous twins should not be allowed to rest in peace for joining that evil cult. Find someone, anyone, destroy the emblems engraved upon their tombstone." So we get two spinnels, uh... Well... Uh, it's fine. And so now we'll just make our way up. Kinda watch out for enemies, cuz there's probably gonna be some people up here. Also, probably some resources that I can...
Damn it. Condor One to roost. The church is sealed up.
And baby eagle?
Negative. Nothing yet. But they sure do have this place locked up tight.
I see. I can think of one reason they'd want to do so.
Oh, she's here. That's for sure. I'll find a way in. Condor One, out.
I wanna make sure I stink around, cuz I, uh... In case we find enemies, cuz uh... I, I'm... Need to make sure I don't go in, but kinda get the, the guests first. I wanna make sure I get all the treasures, sorry. But I, I will, I think I, I'll go, when I get to a point in time, I will need to invest in, um... Getting an, uh, upgrade pace. Considering that the, they're getting, we're at a point where it's like I can't even, uh... There's the elegant headdress. Uh, I'm getting to the point where I can't, um... Uh, it's, it's telling me that I can only store certain things, which I, I don't understand. I would like to have been able to store... Uh, like, like, I had this rifle ammo that I made because I wanted to make room, and I didn't realize that it was gonna do what it did, so... Um... I thought we could just store it away, but we can't. Still, oh... Oh, I'll have to just replace that. Uh, I don't think I have any other things that I can make. Guess I'll have to come back. Oh, I, I got one shot. Could just fire, shotta. I just need to rearrange the, uh... Cuz a, a large thing takes up three spots. I just need to rearrange the, uh... Uh, so we got the headdress. Um, and it's done. Uh... Save room at the map. Alright, so we're pretty much ready on the hatch. Uh, I don't know why I can't... Slutter there... I probably can't climb this slutter. Oh, we can climb it. Flash grenade. Uh, I'm already full whenever, uh, actually. No, I can't. Uh... I don't think I can combine... This is what I mean. I don't, I don't know why they made it so that you can't put... Only put certain things into the... I think certain things can go into the storage. I, I don't understand. Now, now, if I knew that from the start, I would have, uh, upgraded the case much sooner, cuz then we can store more items, so... Realized that that was how it was gonna keep... Have four ways in. Wait, here? So can we not? Oh, right, the, uh, gate is locked. Alright, we do have storage here at least, but... Um... Oh! Battle Ashley. Uh, keep it locked in church until the appoint- keep it locked in the church until the appointment. Alright, we don't have an, uh... Don't think I have a weapon there. Don't think it will work. Do I need the insignia key? Does it tell me that I still need it? If we still need it, then obviously that's why I have to solve it. Not sure if it... Uh, okay, if it doesn't have the tick on it, so we still have to use it for something. But we have, uh, the elegant mask can have three jewels in it, and the viper can have that as well, but... Um, I don't wanna sell anything yet, only because I might need other things. Alright, there's a map, there's a typewriter. Head out and at least put something in there. Uh, lakeside map. A "Test from the outside has some of the, has, has come for the girl. Uh, lock her in the church and... Uh... Wait orders. Wait orders from our lord. Until then, keep the church door shut. The key will be held in the cave on the other side of the lake. Monster will deal with the full bullish intruder." Okay?
The lake. Let's hope for no more surprises.
Uh... I do wanna store the first aid spray away. That way I can pick up that flash grenade on the outside. Unfortunately, I, I just don't know why they, I, I thought that I could have more in the storage. Not sure why they didn't do that. Alright, we'll use the storage, um... I can put first aid. The only stuff I can put away is first aid sprays and, um... Weapons. So obviously I need to keep my weapons. And, and when I say weapons, I mean weapons. I don't mean like, uh, you can't put grenades away, which I, I don't understand. So I'll need to get upgrades. I'll need to invest in upgrades for the case, I think. Head back, grab this, uh, flash grenade, and then we'll go into the... Uh... Grab this flash grenade, then we'll head into, uh... Head down the, the, the hatch. Uh, see, I don't really use gran- the grenades all that much, but I, I was hoping that I could at least store them away. Um, but this is gonna be a point, like, for boss fights and stuff, I'll probably end up using them. Um... Okay, I'm, wait. I thought that it would go and do the flashlight. Yeah. Um... Okay, so... We gotta fight a bunch of enemies. Okay, so there actually is a viper that can be found in here, right? Already found one of them. My case. The bridge. Just gonna open up and take, let me get back. And this will probably just let me, uh... Let's just take, that, that way takes me back to where... We're coming back here at some point. We actually move faster crouching. We do, uh... Try out for the future. I've got, I've got my hand, uh, finger on circle case. Oh! Oh, just, what am I having? For some reason, it wasn't even useful, huh? Okay, I guess... So I should've kept the other knife with me, the... So certain knives, I think, have a certain amount of use. Okay, need to get rid of this snake. Oh! I went full sound knife. Okay, so I need to make sure I repair my knife, then get rid of this viper. Oh! He's dying, please. Okay, so that means that I only get one... Alright, so I only, I only get one... Uh... The combat knife, every other knife that we get in the game is only gonna be used so often. Um... I think the combat knife can keep getting used. Every other knife can't be. But, so I, I need to, like... I need to make room for that, to make sure that I, uh, I need to make sure I repair the knife. I didn't realize that was the case, either. So now I have to deal with enemies. Now I have to deal with, uh... Not having any knives. Something keep coming. Hey. Sometimes I don't understand how they support, so... Not sure if I should go up or down, that's why we did... That's... Hopefully, that's balls. Game is just, uh... If the game's froze, if the game throws all the thing, I'm just gonna wait again to see if the, this... Cuz, uh, last time we, I didn't wait, you know? My, my, uh... Crawler is still showing. Game is on? Most connection. The, uh... Except, hopefully it's still paused. Pause, I don't know how I got to that point, but... I'm not connected to the network. I don't know what is going on. I don't know what happened then. For some reason, it just went... Stopped again. Okay, should be better now. I don't know why it's happening in this game, or sorry, cause it didn't really happen a lot in, uh... Okay, so are they moving enemies over there? Uh, yeah, so I have to keep an eye on the fact that, so... Uh... Thing as well, uh, so we got the viper enemy. Uh, so there is a... There is gonna be a, uh, thing. Yep. Or... There is gonna be a, uh, blue medallion, of course. I don't know why I'm stinking around, considering I don't have any... Level? I think I have mine. I just realised, I don't have any, I don't have a knife on me. Alright, once limited. Uh, alright, we'll head back, uh, down, that way I can... Uh, see what's... See, see, the only reason I made the handgun and the rifle ammo in the first place is because I, um... The only reason I made all that in the first place is because I thought I could store it away, and now I know that I... So now that, I know that I need to, um... Next time I find the merchant, I'll need to get the pace upgrade, so that I carry more items. So... I thought it was a bit different, cause... What's the point in just allowing you only to put first aid sprays and things when you should put everything? They gave you a bigger inventory, why not let you... Uh, actually, use it. Yes, no? Guess I just decided not to. Do I have a kitchen knife? Um, that would be good. Um, indicate the viper. And they come out of nowhere, the, uh... They're looking for a... Quarry is, is right here. Yep. Is it treasure here? How do I get that? Oh, treasure there as well. Low is it based on a... Probably in another area. In my, uh, guide, it's not mentioning about, like, uh... In my guide here, it's not mentioning about a treasure, so I don't think I can get it. Uh... When we reach the quarry area, is where there's gonna be a, um... There's gonna be a request. I wanna head straight, just to see what's down here, for the forces. We already have two of the vipers, like... But, uh, maybe we find any more of them, we can, uh... Use that as skill cards. So, I was praising the game, it's like, oh, it has a, we have a bunch of storage, and then it's like, oh, but you can only use... Storage in, uh... You can only use the storage in certain amounts, it's like, I, I don't, I don't know why, like, why, why would you limit the... Look at that. I, I don't like that they've done that very... I can't use the storage. Can't use the storage because, um... It only lets you store away certain things. Okay, there's the... There's the request table there.
Good luck finding someone big enough to use this thing.
Destroy the blue medallions too. Uh, so anyone who can destroy those blue medallions, this area is polluted by their presence and I can't bear it. Uh, destroy the blue medallions, quarry fish farm, horse finals, because I need to destroy five of those. So, we'll go around and get those. Um, wherever those are located, um... Gonna get another trophy though, um... So after getting this, there's gonna be crows on the ground. We wanna take it out of flash grenade and throw it towards the crows to kill most of them. Um... But this is the easiest one to do, so... Deal with those. Also, that's... actually... We're not quite in the quarry yet, but... Uh, we wanna equip the flash grenade... Is it the flash grenade? I have three of them, right, yep. So, we're gonna use the flash grenade to... Crows. That will get a trophy out of the way. Uh, what is the requirement? For that trophy? I think it's... It might be used three... Uh, defeat three enemies at once with a flash grenade, I guess. So I need to make sure that before I walk into here, that, uh, we... There's two. We wanna aim the flash grenade like... Here, I guess. There, there we go. Okay, that dropped a lot. Um, ah, there's enemies, uh... Have to see them over there. Deal with these. Come on! There's only two of them, two of them? Alright, I think there's, there was only two. Look, look how much stuff dropped from, uh, using the flash grenade there. Didn't realise it was so powerful. Alright, I'll get that out of the way. Yep. Uh, so we dealt with those, and... Uh... Should be a metal cage hanging above with a ruby on it. Also, I needed to make sure I checked the, uh... Defeated three enemies at once with a flash grenade, defeated five enemies with a flash. I need to remember to, uh... Sorry, I forgot to check my map as well. But the... Interesting that the map is only showing one blue medallion, but are the rest of them located elsewhere, cause... Maybe they're along the way. Cause there's, there's one blue medallion there, but then where are the rest? Who... Ah, okay, they're all over. So, so... Unlike the other one, it's, it's spaced out. Oh, there's a shooting range there, um, we need to do that for another trophy. I think where the shooting range is, whenever you see a shooting range, there's also a... Purge, so... Uh, hopefully I have enough money when I get back there to be able to do that, um, so... Grab everything here. Right, nearly at ten thousand. Loud snoring. From sapphire drop from. Alright, I can... It's like random for, like, certain enemies to just drop a, uh... Drop a hand grenade. Drop a, uh... Should have actually enough money to do things now. There should be a cage somewhere. Right. Ah! This. Alright, so I've got that. And then... Uh, gotta get the medallion as well. And then we go and do the shooting gallery. Hopefully the shooting gallery doesn't use our actual ammo, or just uses... Hopefully the shooting gallery uses our... Hopefully the shooting gallery uses our, um... Doesn't use any bolts that we actually use. Hopefully it's like a preset thing. So, pretty much, we just head to the shooting gallery is the next thing. Nothing else here that we need to do. Is there anyone who can destroy this blue medallion series? Uh, I've already got that one. Okay, I like how, um, it says that we've already completed this, um, viper hunter, we've got one that we can sell, so we need to remember to sell that when we go back into the... We need to remember to sell that when we go back to, um, the merchant. And then we need one more viper to get that. Other one of these boxes that I don't have a... Uh, thing for. Small resources, can I actually make anything good? I can make more rifle ammo, and then that would clear up... That would clear up, like, one large resource. Now we just have to manoeuvre everything around again. And then it's... I suppose, I think. Got so many grenades, but we're probably gonna need to use them anyway. We'd like, we used a, uh... We used a flash grenade on that one area anyways, that cleared off just fine. So there's a, uh, definitely there's the, uh, merchant, so we can do a couple of things. Definitely have more money to do, just for the, uh... Hopefully we can buy... Uh, more... Uh, hopefully we can buy more, uh, get, pick that cas, uh, case. We need that. And now I have a lot of, like, treasures to sell, but I... I guess we're just heading to here. Guessing this is gonna be a safe area. Yep, cause there he is, he's like, eh, uh... Before I go in, like... This is the way that we have to go, so obviously I'll check around the quarry. Uh, do we, for a... Hexagon piece A. Wondering why it wasn't showing my A. He's right there. Down here. Wanna make sure I don't progress too far, cause, uh, we need to do the shooting gallery anyway. We found the hexagon piece. Okay, so, pretty much down here is a castle. You may as well just go ahead and practise, we're not progressing this far. I think the area that I'm in currently right now is like a safe area, because, um, so close to the, uh... But I don't think this is gonna work. We're so close to the... Uh, merchant that I don't think it... Must be around here, if I get here. It's showing up mechanical cadence, which... That is the giveaway. Hang a boat. Have a look around, the quarry. I feel like it has to be around that area, but... But also going and getting stuff here for all this could miss some more, uh... Uh, forget me some more items. It's not... Here? Here then. Why does it say it is? Uh... There was a gap between an overhanging ton box, as I can see. So go and grab that. Hey. I can hear, so it's like right here. Trying to see if it... Can I get a better angle to see if I can... Up here? Let's see if I could, yeah. I, I can hear it, and the, the issue is that it's not, um... Trying to get like a good angle or a good light. Alright, I'm gonna take a quick break for a second. Be back. Alright, let's try and find this, uh... I- I- I don't know why I can't find this um... I can hear it, it's- it's- it's a bad... I can hear the- the mechanical sound. And... But I can't see it. And I'm trying to see like, if there's any moving areas where... Um... Doesn't give away where it's supposed to be, it's like, I- I can't see. It just says that it's... Like, oh, it's a, okay, so it's like above... Above something? Oh, it's there, there it is. Alright. So uh, now we can head back to... Merchant, I'll probably... I don't know what rewards, do we get any rewards for completing the shooting galleries? 'Cause if we do, then obviously, uh, follow the path I had until you get another building. Uh, shooting gallery... Uh, you win coins that are used to, okay, so um... Shooting challenges win, we get coins that are used to obtain charms, which give you three... Uh... We get charms which give bonuses when attached to the case. Okay, so I guess we... Obviously I wanna go and save and do all the stuff as well, um...
Took care of a request, did ya? I can tell by the look on your face.
Oh... Oh, to win, uh, lost, I guess? Oh, there's a weapon there. Merchant chip, get cash back. Instead of letting your unused guns collect dust, why not sell them and spend the extra cash off of a weapon you do use? Uh, when you sell a weapon you've tuned up, you get almost all the expenses you put into it back. There's no catchmate, we're just booting for you. That's... Pretty much like. Wonder if that's meant to be a tease of like, oh, this is what you should do, um... Gonna make it safe now? Just in case something has uh... First of all, I wanna change the... I completely forgot that I need the co- so the combat knife I need... Uh, 'cause it's um... All the other knives that I have will um... Eventually disappear if I don't, so... Actually, I need to sell first, huh?
Haha, nice work. What can I interest you in?
Uh, buy, tune up, sell, okay, so uh, I need to sell... The... Viper, to get... So you can already see like, my weapons are worth, my- my- my shotgun's worth 23,000 if I sell it. Um, so obviously if we get a better shotgun, then I can get... That- that's really handy that they can have, anything new. And... Flash grenade. So no- nothing is... Um... Nothing new there, right, though, 'cause we just go, we can find yellow herbs as we go. Uh, like, I definitely need to buy the pace upgrade, 'cause I need a larger pace. But how does that... Okay, that improves our case a lot. Um, so we get... That improves our case by two, uh, by... Well, like, all these extra souls, yeah, that's actually, that's actually really good. Um, alright, uh... I went through, grabbed everything there, came back here, sold everything. Um, I can add the knives back to, oh, I need to also re- how much money do I have for that? I don't have enough money to repair my knife. Save the game. Uh, I now need to do the... I now need to do the shooting gallery. 'Cause uh, the shooting gallery's gonna give us coins where we get charms, um, which I believe are unique to the... That system, so... Uh, if we can't use the coins for anything else, I'm obviously gonna use the coins to purchase items. We need to get S rank in all the shooting galleries anyway. I don't think there's anything that's... Like, I can't afford anything else right now, but... I don't have enough to re- repair the knife. At least I have a knife on me. Save the game. Where is this shooting gallery, so I can... Eh, that? I think there's a shooting gallery somewhere, but I... Probably on... Here? We did come with that way? Ah, it's right here. Alright, uh, so, for one of the trophies, we need to... Uh, complete a shooting gallery, and I think we also need to get an S rank in all the shooting galleries, so... Uh, shoot through and destroy fire, but that one there we can't do until a certain point, uh, earn an S rank in all games at the shooting range. So I will... Probably... Um, yeah, follow the, yeah, so, I'm gonna go and, and uh, complete the... I'm gonna try and complete the shooting range as best as I can. Hopefully it doesn't use our actual ammo, that's why I made a save. That's why I made a save, so... Let's uh... Think about the shooting gallery, and three force. Um, apparently it gives us coins for charms, um, I think they're unique coins, so... Uh, like, the spindles, we are getting through requests, that's fine, uh, I'm not spending them on anything, 'cause there's other things that I'll need for later. Uh, token machines, use three silver... Okay. Okay, so token machines, you can use three silver or gold tokens at the token machines to win a random charm. The more gold tokens you use, the greater your chance of getting a red charm, okay, so... Token machines are... It's a separate system, so... Uh, you can use three silver or gold tokens at the token machines to win a random charm, the more gold tokens you use, the rarer the charms, like, so I don't know what the rarity of the... I don't think I have any charms, so... Yeah, okay, so I don't have any charms, so I guess we get those... I don't know if there's a limitation, or... I'm guessing that once we get, uh, the way that it works is once we get a charm the first time, it should be... Like a practice rules, destroy the pirate and shoot for the high score. Weapons and ammo are unlimited good, I guess, so I can keep attempting this as much as I like. Uh... And it's all free, earn tokens based on your score for a chance to win magnificent prizes, so we need to aim for S ranks anyway. Uh, if we get an S rank, then obviously that's uh... Uh, gonna be good, 'cause we'll probably get more gold tokens. Prizes, exchange your tokens for charms at a token machine, they're full of treasures that can be found nowhere else, right? So, do well here, and then we'll pretty much spend a bunch of tw- oh, yeah, thank you. Tips and tricks, uh, you can destroy several targets at once by shooting nearby dynamite to set off an explosion. Careful shooting a sailor will deduct points from the score. Uh, some targets cannot be destroyed with one shot, shoot as many chances it takes until they break. If certain conditions are met, bonus targets will be added, however, these conditions will win, will change from game to game. Because we need to get S rank in all of these anyway. Uh, and getting these will give us charms that we can attach to our case, so... I don't know how many charms we can attach, if we can attach a whole bunch of them, if there's only a limitation, I saw someone had... Uh, at least three on theirs. Um, but if there's token, uh, something that would give us, like, like, right now we have our, if you look at our case... The case says, um... I don't know where I found the case, the... The case and charm perks, I've currently got a perk on that increases the drop weight for handgun ammo. Uh, but it's not showing up as a- as a charm, so... I guess we'll just see how we go, um... I like how they have mentioned, though, that um... I like how they've mentioned that... Charm, uh, charm the... Uh, when you upgrade a weapon... But I- I've upgraded like, say, the- the shotgun, all the thing, when I upgrade that weapon... Uh, it says you get almost all the expense back that you spent on that weapon, so that means if we get a better shotgun, or a better pistol... I can sell the pistol I currently have, and I still get all that money back that I think, and then I can invest that back into the... The other one, so um... Let's uh, see what the uh... Shooting gallery has. It says unlimited ammo on weapons, or unlimited or whatever, so... So, what have we got here? Um, so sailors, sorry, sailors are 500 points lost. Uh, shooting a skull is 300, there's dynamite which is traveling, pirates at 200, and then there's like, a captain which is 400. Alright, so I got to keep them in mind. Okay, so... Uh, I guess we have silver and bronze? Uh, that- that looks like they're bronze rather than s- uh, gold. Um, okay, so... There's three of the, obviously, with all three of these, we need to get an S rank. Um, so what have we got here? Uh... Rewards, least 3,000 uh, points over silver, 5,000 for silver, 7,000 for a gold. Every 1,000 after that, we get a silver. 100% obtained, we get a gold. Uh, high score, bonus conditions, uh, okay, so, I guess, we'll- we'll give all these a- a shot, obviously, and then I will uh... If I need help, I can just look up stuff from the way, um... That's pretty much the same, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000. And then there's, but, I don't know what the bonus conditions are, 4,000, 6,000, 8,000, so... So, let's just give them a shot. Hopefully there's aim assist. Ah, I see those uh... One here, we wanna shoot that, so we get a... Ah, I see. Okay, yeah, we're gonna destroy the ones with the, those tokens. I don't know what the high score is, or what we're required to do, but... I- I saw that happen. Oh! Uh, here's dynamite. Oh, oh, I- I did, I'm- I'm supposed to shoot the guy with the dynamite. Okay, I- I- I saw. I- I was supposed to shoot the dynamite, we gotta be. Not bad, um, I- I think, there I made a mistake, 'cause it's like, uh... That guy had dynamite, if we shoot the dynamite out of his hand, it's gonna level him around. That- that's actually a risk. That- that was... Uh, sync this up, and we'll uh, attempt it again. That was a B rank, so, I pretty much hit every target... Part, and then I lost some points for the other ones, so... Hopefully we don't have to be absolutely perfect to get S ranks, but considering that was a B rank, and I missed a whole bunch at the end... Uh, so what to be do, um... The 1A. Uh, so we hit 20 out of the 27 targets, we hit two of the skulls... Uh, remaining time, score, and, okay, so... Alright, we'll- we'll- we'll do this again. Okay, so, uh... I guess by getting score set, um... By getting the score set, uh, like, I- I- I don't think we get another silver token for... Um, I don't think I get another, I don't think that I get another silver token for... Uh, completing the... Uh, so, if I reach 3,000 again, I don't think I get another silver token, I think I've already earned that, so... Um, and I don't think there's a thing for getting all of the charms, but um, like I said, the bonus condition is destroy all of the pirates. And we can do this one again. And we can do this one again. Why am I missing this guy? So I know that the next one come, you know? I made a mistake here last time. I made a mistake, I was supposed to shoot the dynamite. That, that was my mistake. Got an A rank, 22, like I said, yeah, as I said, we only get, um... Uh, we only get the silver tokens that we earned. So that was an A rank, uh... 22 out of 27, 2 out of 6, yeah, like... A rank's probably like, what, 6,000? S rank's probably like 6,000 points, I, I can... Probably a more optimal way to get through this, but I'm fairly confident that I can, uh... So I need to get more accuracy for the... Like here, this is, okay. Wasting 20. So they come, they come from like here, so I just need to make sure I keep it through. Alright, so obviously this one here we can keep shooting, but... Then I wanna shoot the dynamite out of the guy's hand. Buy everything we have, uh, okay, oh, okay, that's cool. This is actually gonna... I see this, I see something floating up there. Not sure what that's for. Please let this just be a one. Alright, I should have just focused on something before then. Or I got an S rank anyway. Yeah, see, i- if you look at what happened, like, I got all 27 pirates. Uh, but we only got four of the skulls, um, so that means that I was missing four skulls somewhere, so I could have probably got a bunch of bonus points easily for that. Um... Okay, so 100% obtained... 100% obtained for the... 100% obtained means get all of the... Uh... 100% obtained means we get all the, all the things, so if I can find a spot where all the, if I can find where all the... Uh, skulls spawn, then at that point I can get a free thing as well, and then we've done everything that we can. Um... So I, I'm not seeing where all the skulls are, so they might appear in certain spots, let's, uh, let's go and have a look then. Because I... We've done the first one on S rank, we don't need to get S rank plus or something like that, I just wanna try and get as many... Uh, because in this case, it's like, we've already beaten the score, but the S rank, which is fine, um... I did destroy all the pirates though, um, I just don't know what I need, I, I need to do for the... Um, let's try a shooting gallery, I, I just wanna see... Uh, if, if, how to get all the, uh, skulls. Well, I wanna see if someone, how someone did it, because if, if it's too complicated, I will, uh... Leave it. I wanna see what they did. I'm not trying to go for S++, we already have the S, that's all, all that we need, so... Just see if, uh, let's see what it is and, uh, hopefully that all works out. Let's see if we can, uh, get all that out. Um, I, I just wanna see if I can get to the... Uh, all the, where the skulls spawn. If we can figure that out, I'll go ahead and do that, yeah. I just wanna see if it's like determined based on... Okay, so one skull... Two on that guy. They're really fast. I was just being missing the, uh... Ah, that guy has a skull on his head, oh, you didn't see that, so the, the... One of the moving guys has a skull on his head. Oh, I see, okay, so there's skulls that are on the, um, in the bonus round as well. Okay, so... Pretty much to get it, we're gonna have to go and think next like it's a... I mean, I'm not gonna, I don't think I really need to necessarily aim for those, because... You have to get all of them in the one run, uh, I think I'm just gonna go and aim, like... We, we completed this, we got the S rank, we killed all the pirates, which was fine, um... It, yes, like, you do get an extra, like... Um, it's like, pretty much what we have to do here is... Get the S rank which we have, trophy, and all the pirates are destroyed anyway, and then... If I miss like, uh, something, it's like, I don't think I'm gonna get a, so let's just, uh... Let's, uh, get this one, so I saw how good labor out of those, uh... Oh, we're using a sniper now, oh, god, this is... Really not good. I, I don't like this. Oh, that guy has a, uh, now I see that guy has a... Why are we... I do not like this one. I can see where all the skulls are, though. I don't know. I, I might need to change the... Though, this is really bad. I don't think that was an S rank. That was a B. Yeah, that one there, that one there makes sense, because it's like, we missed a ton of, uh... Uh, I missed a ton of, um... Skulls, the... But I, I also, the other reason why is I wasn't expecting the, uh... Uh, I wasn't expecting to be a one... At least now we're a little bit more good. Alright, this one here I need to try and hit short enough. Is that safe time? I was gonna say, I'm just trying out. I don't know why I'm missing the skulls. I, I don't think I thought it. This one here is a little bit more annoying. Really, we got another, uh, so I, in this one here, to really get the score, I'm gonna need to, um... This one here, I'm really going to need to, uh... I'm gonna need to aim for the skulls. There I made a mistake here. Need to really aim for the skulls. Taking way too long, I need to go left from right. Yeah, I'm... 3500. This one's a bit annoying, because of the... I think we need, the, the, what we need to do here is we need to get the skulls, um... I, I think I just need to aim for the skulls. The issue with this one is it's a bit short. Wasn't on it. Oh, that guy had a skull on him. Just not sure what the best, uh... Way to do this, because I might need to look up a coin. They all have, I can see that some of them have skulls on them. Yeah, I don't think that's enough. Got four skulls, okay, so that's an A rank, but, so I probably, you're looking at probably like 5,000 would be enough, but... Uh, I'm missing where all the skulls are. Ah, there's the, there's the skull right there. Wondering where that guy's skull was. Ah, they haven't, I needed to add it. I took too long, at least we know, I, I'm seeing where the skull is. That, that was too soon. I don't think that's gonna be enough. Okay, so I, I, I did see, but I, I, I've noticed that there is right now. Getting rid of the, again, getting rid of this guy first is gonna... Like, I, I'm terrible with the... Aim. That one there I just missed. Alright, at least I got all three skulls there, but I don't think that's gonna be enough. I'm not sure if I, where the skulls are on these enemies, I can't see them. I, I still don't think that's enough, I'm, I'm missing some skulls. 4926, I, I, I don't know what's... Five out of the 10 skull, like, I'm, I'm guessing the other ones are gonna be in areas where that's... Thing, but it's, it's just so... I think 5,000 is probably the score, but... Like, this one here is the most annoying. Getting like, at least, at least three skulls. Got at least four, I just don't know where the rest of them are. One there, I, I can see it on it. I need to make sure I can spot one. But it's still not gonna be enough, I think. Getting like, we're so close to 5,000, I'm guessing 5,000 is gonna be the thing, I mean... So close to, uh... I think I just... Oh, that's what it is. Yeah, I made a mistake, because I didn't get the skull. Skull, like, I, I'm, I'm really glad to... I'm seeing any skulls on these enemies. That one there. I'm gonna be in time. So high score like 40, the high score's 5,000, I can probably do it, but if it's 6,000, I don't know, uh... I'm not sure where they... See, the other one is, it gives you two options. The other one, it gives you four options. Yeah, see, I think 5,000 is what gives us the score, so... Yeah, actually, it would, it would be 5,000, so I'm, I'm only like 50 points short, which is just... Annoying, that's like one, one thing that I'm missing. Alright, I guess I'll just keep trying, I know the bonus condition is to kill the pirates, but that's difficult. Battle, let's go. Good, I battle again. I bit shoot one. Nice round, dude. I don't think this is gonna be good enough, uh, we, if we're talking, miss a skull, less, less points. Even if I get these double kills, it's not giving me the, uh... The double kills aren't giving me, none of these have, uh, skulls on them, apart from that one there, and I missed him. This is, my, my 5,000, like, I was, I got to 4955, that's... So minimal. I wish I could, why did, I'd rather get the skull. I hope that that guy is not the last one, that's, uh... I need to get the skull here. Should be good. Hit both these, please. Yeah, that should be enough, 5,000, I think we reached it. There we go, alright. So, okay, so the S rank score is always gonna be the, um... S rank score is always going to be, uh... Uh, what the last score is here, so... The S rank score here should be 8,000. But what's gonna happen here, are we gonna start with sniper rifle and then with the shotgun, and, we either start with the... Starting with one weapon or we can pick, I don't know. I guess we're starting with the weapon? Need a dynamite. Oh, that's... Really annoying, I can already tell. Oh, my. Hey, there's no other enemies. Oh, there's a guy right behind me. Ah, I cheated. Hey, wait, I'm doing really badly with this. Oh, we're close to 8000 there. How am I gonna get 8000? Um, 16 out of 23, so we killed my, we killed... Didn't get seven of the pirates. So, is that one... Maybe it's because we get... Because we get, uh... I don't figure out how I did this one to 8000, eh, because I, I need to reach 8000, so I got over halfway. But we hit the majority of the pirates, I think it's just because I missed a lot of the... Um, alright, I wanna see what someone else did, just to see, like... Um... This one here, it's gonna be more on like, where... Where the targets are. Uh, and what's, um, what's better to be used, because I, I think we can pick between two different things. I'm just not very good with shooting, um... I'm not aiming for 100%, I'm just aiming for, um... Gonna aim for... Not aiming for 100%, I'm aiming for just S rank. See, so I need 8000 points, uh, I like how it's like, you have to hit 123 pirates, well, you can do it without it, um... Obviously, that makes things easier, because I, I just saw the highest score here is, um... Yeah. We get two weapons, now I mean exactly when to switch weapons, okay, so, that's, that's probably what's gonna happen, um... Stand at the center, aim to the left side, um... Yeah, because the rifle, you can get double kills, but... Okay, so I think maybe like, when it gets to the reload time, because I realized that there was two that I could have hit there. Okay. But if I can somehow, like, I, I think that's pretty much just gonna be the strategy, is like, if you can somehow get through... If I can somehow get to bonus time, it'll give us like, actually 2000 points, actually, I don't know. Just a matter of knowing when to... Here, I'm taking my two. And I shot a silo as well, which is bad. Somehow I shot the silo. This is bad. I lost like 300, but I'm fine with that. In this area here, I'm thinking, I need to, um... Use the... And when it comes to business later, because I'm shaking way too much, so I think... After reload time is when we need to, um, swap the carry. That's what I need to do, yeah, so it's... When it comes to reload, because if we add 1500 to that, like, um... If I add 1500 points to that, that's like, uh, 5100. But I think when it gets to the reload time, I need to swap the rifle potentially. Also, should I also see what I can get, uh, from charms as well? Shooting the barrel? Like, I think I know, why not? Yeah, so from here, I should probably swap to the rifle. Only because I need to, um... There's some enemies here that have like, uh... Alright, and now we swap to the pistol. I got 5400, that, but then I missed, how many pirates? Three. Uh, and then like, if I hit that other guy there, it would be 400, yeah, so that means that I... And I didn't get any skulls either, so... I think this is doable. Would have been nice if the, uh, then had like, aim system. I think we need to stay on the rifle, uh, on the... Need to stay on the, uh... Need to stay on the, uh... And I think here, we should swap to the rifle. Only because we can double hit enemies. Yeah, I think that's actually more beneficial. Then we reload, and then we start with the rifle here. I think I'll try that. Because then we use the rifle here. We get both these out of the way. And like, getting all these guys for, uh... And here, we just swap to the rifle. Yeah, I think that's what we do, so, um... When it gets to the part where there's six targets, we'll swap to the rifle, shoot, shoot one in the middle and the one on the left, and then... Swap to the pistol, shoot the one to the right, swap to the thing, through the... Thing. Need to also figure out where the best place to aim is. Obviously, if we miss that, that, the issue there is that we, uh... Not find the silos. And I also missed the pirates, so that means that I... This area here, I was thinking actually use the... Rifle. Yeah, it's like 30 seconds time, now, here we swap to the... Here, we swap to the pistol, because now we can do, I don't only have like one thing of penetration, but... I... I don't think I'm fast enough. I don't think I'm fast enough to get through. That was terrible. If we can get to the bonus round, then label bonus, we will swap to it. I just don't know if I'm fast enough, this one. And like, keep missing here, just takes some time. I'm just thinking that's now. I just don't think I'm fast enough. My aim is really bad. Man, I, I'm not aiming for the, all the stuff, like, if I can... Like, here, I, I just don't know, I, I got to 5400. Got to 5400, but I just don't feel like I... For me to get, I, I... I looked at the thing and it was like I missed a couple of ones. I don't think I'm gonna be able to get point this one. There's like a... I need to see a video. I got to 5400. But I, there's, there's, there's several that I'm missing, at the start. I'm missing... Uh... I can look at the video, but it's like I... But like, I, I, I know there's people that, that do all skulls and all that stuff as well, but... I'm not necessarily trying to aim for all skulls, I'm just trying to aim to get by this, with the S rank. I got a B, right, but I was like a 5400, uh... And then like, I know if we beat all the... Uh, if we beat all of the enemies, we get a, um... If we beat all of the ene, if we shoot all of the enemies, uh... I can't have fluid this is compared to... Wait, this is 1A, why, why is it 1A, right? On C. Like, I can see someone's got like, all skulls, I'm not trying to aim for all skulls, I'm just trying to see like what they... I think, I think I have that, the strategy, uh, idea of what I need to do with it. So like, oh, okay, so it's actually more beneficial to just shoot the... Yes, it actually might be more beneficial. That, that's the one part that I don't really make clear. About what the best thing to do is. Like, shooting the barrels in some cases actually is, uh, better than... So they get to like 7400 at bonus time, hitting every skull, obviously, but, uh... Okay, that's their actual moving. That makes it a little bit easier. It is like 40 something seconds as well, as time spent. It's like, once you get to bonus time, it pretty much is game, like, he got 11,000 points. Uh... So this is definitely, like, like, I didn't realize that to start, right, that, uh... That section was like, the, the guy that put the barrel, right, you can shoot the barrel twice, and then there's a, a thing on him, so it's, it's actually better to just shoot the barrel. You get the bonus, uh, there's a bonus skull there. That actually means that I should do that instead, yeah, I need to... Back. Um... I'll, I'll give it a shot again, like, uh... I saw how they were doing. That one actually helped, I think about it, but... Like, right here. Just my shooting right here is just not great. It's not rough, so... My, my aim is just... My aim is just... Uh, I don't know. We got more skulls, but I, I feel like I'm too slow. Because like, that first opening section, shoot the guy with the barrel, shoot that thing, shoot those two, then you got the three there that I, I think I missed that. Uh, then you would swap to the rifle, guy in the center. Uh, then shoot the guy on the left. Uh, and then at that point, it goes to the... Uh, 6, 6 and, uh, the 6, so at that point, you wanna swap to rifle to shoot both of them. And then the final one, swap to the pistol, shoot that. And then you reload, then you move to the... Uh, center, shoot the two guys, and then just take out them, and hopefully you've taken out enough of the enemies. I, I, I feel like I... I, I wanna give it a couple more attempts. Before we move on. Still missed the skull. Then I, my, uh, enemy, uh... Skull on that guy as well. This here is supposed to be, uh, where you do the rifle. 3000 is just way too low. Way too slow. 4500, but then I missed several, like, skulls, I, I don't think I can do this. Like, to be able to get through this one, I feel like I'm gonna need to get to bonus time. And, uh, I don't think I can get to bonus time. Okay, so now I'm gonna try and figure out what I'm gonna do with these, uh, charms. I have, I... Alright, I've at least given it a shot, um... I can always probably come back here with better, actually, no, I can't come back with better weapons, everything's unlimited. I'll, uh, I've tried that already a couple of times, I don't think I'm gonna get by that one. Uh, maybe if I get better with aim, I can, but... We do have the token machine now. Um... So, a silver token can be exchanged for prizes at the shooting range, uh... So apparently, the way this works is... We have seven right now, seven tokens, um... Means we can get at least two. Uh, so I was thinking I could either do... I'm thinking what I should do is I should use this gold token. Uh, use it, do, uh, is a... Uh, use it, do, is it better for me to do two gold to... Tokens and one silver, or one gold, two silver for both times? I think, I think it might be better to do one gold, two silver. Let's try this and see how it goes. See what we get. Charms. Charms will be swapped out via the customised case menu in any type, right, okay, so what do we get? We got Don Diego, a common 15%... Uh... 15%, plus 15% rifle ammo craft bonus. Okay, that's... Um, I don't know how many of these there are, so let's just, uh... Just give this a shot again. And Don Pedro, uh, plus 40% health recovery providers, okay, so that would be better if I... Uh, so I guess... Right. Didn't get greatest, I think, but, uh... We can always come back here and try these again. Not the greatest, uh, pick up, but at least we've got something. Um... The, the good thing is though, is that if, um... We can't get the S rank here, we, uh, the way that the shooting gallery works is there's gonna be more shooting galleries available later on in the game. Uh, and the final shooting gallery has access to every single... Ah, shooting gallery and then so on and so forth with the other ones, so like, the next time we see a shooting gallery, we'll have the... The next time we see the shooting gallery, we'll have the thing on it, so, um... Alright, may as well, uh, prize that case. Uh, I don't know how many we can put on, so... Doesn't tell me that I can't put heaps on, so let's, uh... Uh, I'd probably prefer this. Uh, okay, so we can only have three. Uh, we can only have three equipped, so... Um, possibly only have the two, we may as well... Okay, so the case itself has a, the case itself has a perk of increasing handgun ammo drops. Um, we, we only have, uh... We have two of each, so... We have one of each, so, uh, I-I-I'm guessing because there's a one here, that means we can get duplicates as well, so that's gonna be annoying. Uh, at least we've got something, that's just, uh... Save and then we'll move on. I can't get by it, I can't get by it, because, uh... The issue here is like, I-I know the pattern of what I need to do, the issue is, is that the, um... I don't see how I can get points that I need unless I get to bonus time and... I can't get to bonus time because it makes mistakes for now. Um, but, uh, if I get like, let's say, if I got all the S ranks and everything else, and then I come back to there and I do that one, I might be able to redo it, but, uh... Um, we'll see how it goes. Uh, so I look for the next blue medallion. Located outside of this area. I know I could have saved the charm for something else, but I was thinking... I'd rather go 2, 2 and 1, uh, 2, uh... Do the thing, then, uh... Okay, um... Next, blue... Blue medallion is, uh, I guess it's the same. There's like a mini map or something that would at least allow me to think, because I can't, uh, access the yellow one for whatever reason. Uh, it's a price. Okay, so we have the silver token, so I-I know I could have, um... Because the options that I had for the tokens at the time was, uh... I could have gone two gold tokens and one silver to get something, or I could have just gone 1, 2, 2. And I felt like getting a 1, 2, 2 means that I get at least two consistent, rather than getting a one good one and one... It is what it is, like, I'm... We don't need to collect all the, all the charms anyway, so... Um... Ah, sorry, the next one is there. Like, I-I looked at that, that particular... I looked at that particular, um... Nopping some bodies? Uh, okay, that's, that, that's one of the, uh, that's the, uh... One of the placement bodies. But I moved on because of, uh... Oh, okay. Like, feed, whatever that is. I gave up mainly because of, uh, the thing. Uh, I gave up because of the... Uh, thing, I-I felt like I couldn't get any higher. I got to 5400 and then it's like my 5400 score... Um... I would have had to have hit every target, and I had three targets left, but just too fast at the time, so... Anything else I can see? That's a, is that a body? Can I zoom in any further? Barrel's in the water as well. Wonder if we're gonna have to fight, though? Alright, uh, I'm gonna inspect all the, all these things, okay? Right. But I pretty much just gave up for that reason. I got to 5400, um... Which would have been like, I-I know I missed one of the things, but it's like the, the issue is like the other ones. But, like, if I can get to bonus time, that would be fine, but I just don't feel like I could. What else is out here? Let's see if there's anything else in that portal. Didn't see which way they went, though. And I guess... Kinda check the... But the tiger machine thing I did was fine. I don't know how many of them there are. Probably some of them are merchants, uh, chance with the attack case. But again, the shooting range, and an S rank is the shooting range. But it did, it doesn't bother me too much, because we can return there if we feel like it, but... I just got to a point where I had a look at how other people did it, and, um... Like, this one here, they want you to get a perfect game. Um, we can't do the five targets in one shot yet because we haven't got a weapon that can pierce that many targets yet, and... Uh, I think it... Automatically, there's like automatically one that allows us to do that. I don't think there's anything else left to do, but we've already got, uh... Obviously, there's a trophy for getting the shooting range, but I just felt like... 5400 was what my score was, and I know I missed a couple, but the couple that I missed were really easy to miss them, and... That's the only way that I'm gonna get by is if I hit all of the things. Whereas the other one, at least I knew I could get by it if I was a little bit smarter and better, um... Didn't need to necessarily reach the bonus game. Uh... So... Guess we're heading down and we'll get this first. There's not, there's anything else that we can... Like how, um, instead of climbing, had, climbing down the ladder, he, uh... Drops down. But the token machine thing's good, because at least it gives us some perks that... The perks that we got weren't great, but, um... What can you do? Uh, which way do we go? Uh... Okay, that way is... Lo... But I'm guessing that's the way we're supposed to go. Do the stuff here, we'll do this then. Uh, when the old boat fuel, the boat fuel is stored with the generator fuel inside the processing building at the fish farm, take only what you need. Okay? But because the sub-objective is here... Uh... I'm thinking that I need to... Then I get the sub, then, sorry, okay. Sub-objective is there, the boat fuel is here. I'm trying to figure out if I'm supposed to go to there first or... Um... Mentioned to drop down to the lower level or something that I should actually drop down first before going through that way? Um... I can still make my way up if I... That is a... Okay, this is a piece of the puzzle, um... I guess I can put this in? Alright. At least puts that in. What else? Grab whatever... Items are available to us. Yellow herb, that's gonna be useful, now I can use that to, uh... To be able to put that in my... Knife will be useful, um... This should allow me to combine with what I have currently. Craft... Okay, so I can craft using, um... I'm obviously not, I-I'm going to keep, uh, the mixed herb until... Uh, I absolutely need to use it, but, uh, having the GRY will give me full heal and other things, we'll craft that. Now we have one of those. Um, I can still make GG wise as well, so those are good as well. Uh, if I do find another green herb, I do have a red herb I can combine that with. Um... Still also looking out for any vipers that I can find. And the, the, the case did get a big upgrade, though, that's, that's what I'm also happy about, um... Like, yes, this, okay, so the boat's here, but we can't do anything with it. I think it said that we needed boat fuel. I've heard down here it's probably not gonna... Then we probably don't have any fuel, right? Yep, okay, so we actually do need it. There's the... There is the, uh... Medallion? Alright, so I do have an upgrade for my health, but I'm not gonna use it, because I can use that as a full heal. Um... Blue medallion then. They did mention we had to go to the fish farm, so that's where we're gonna go anyway, um... Alright, so there's gonna be a fight, pretty much. Also, we're gonna get the last viper that we need to go. I already have one of them. I already sold off two of them. Uh, there's something else that's gonna be here, um, the hexagonal piece we might put in here, because it's our main spot to put it in. We already have it, that way we don't have to worry about it for the next time. Uh... Let's, uh, go towards... I don't think there's anything else that was... We, we need the, it mentioned that we needed the fuel anyway. There will be some enemies here, so we can do with them. Well, so much for trying to be sneaky. Oh, there's a... Radhouse kick, radhouse kick, yo. That's a one damage. Could also be using the knife instead of radhouse kicking, after... Okay, I'm set. Thank you for that, uh... Uh-oh. I gotta get out of here. Alright, we dealt with that, right? I keep forgetting that we can, uh, instead of radhouse kicking, pick that one. Alright, that should be all the enemies dealt with here, not all of them piling back. But I've also got running low on ammo as well, but... I guess that's also a good thing, because then I can start using the... Uh... Some resources and things like that, to make the ammo. Where's this other viper? Uh, there's a blue medallion, we need to... There's a small hut with a medallion inside, I... I don't know if there's any other enemies that are gonna up here, yeah, but, uh... Could be a possibility. I do hear them. Actually, I should, uh, could go, oh, first... Where do we have to go for the school? Yeah, because there's only certain, uh, I think all the areas here, like the... Uh, darker areas, those are like where the water is. What I should do is I should go to any of the upper areas. Uh, first, that way I can get resources and... Uh... Other things. Okay, we actually find those, uh, randomly, oh, like, I thought they were only exclusive to the, uh... Mansion. There's still some people that are alive. I should also consider that as well, I-I thought that, uh, spinals were only exclusive to mansion, related stuff, um... I can go off this way, so I haven't, um... Don't know where this takes me. It doesn't, it's a hint to me. That just takes me back to the entrance. Okay, that takes me back to the end. Okay, so we know where that goes. Head through the small path. Of, uh... Okay, that's apparently... Also find a total of three vipers in the same place as the previous medallion, usually on... Did I... Did I miss? Uh, actually, no, we, we shot. That was number three, uh, usually on the path before the pot. Uh... I think I missed some snake, uh, vipers. I didn't see, I don't remember seeing any. I remember smashing those, those things and they went in, uh... Alright, what am I here? Uh, aim? Alright. There's our, uh... Also remember that we can, um... With the vipers, um... Uh, with the vipers, we, uh... Uh, can use them for healing as well. Uh, so the next thing, we, we'll wait for the vipers, uh... House, tall tower on the left is the next, that image I'm guessing me, this here, uh... It's pretty much just gonna be followed by water. Um, we will get attacked from those cuz there's enemies all over the place here. Heard you shooting from my sword, someone firing it. Drop the top someone. Enemies spawn all over the place here. From, uh, from a melee, these guys can go down from, uh... I don't know why I keep not seeing enemies spawn, uh, near me. I've already seen myself having problems with the, uh... I've already seen myself having problems with lack of ammo and stuff. There's that, there's that. What was that? Got hit hard. Also, that dealt with... Then eventually we'll get the, um, we're heading towards the anti-viper tribut next to you. I think is... Up this way, it's probably better for me to go up this way. I mean, I have to head around anyway, and it's stuff over here anyway. Oh, I can hear the... Need plenty of, uh, sages, uh... That's a handgun, at least. I guess the game intends us on using... Game intend on us using the handgun ammo, um... Next treasure is... Probably not supposed to be on this yet, um... You've gotta follow the water to get that. That means I need to head, so we were here and then I went up here, did everything. Turn back around. There's a viper, which I'll use, but we can use this healing. I don't think the, I don't think the, I don't think I can get to the blue medallion here anywhere. Coming around because, uh, there's a treasure that I need, but... Pipe, uh, so now we just go to... Pretty much the end, where the, uh... Uh... Yeah, pretty much head back up, boy. Is that it? Also, also fight. Lot of vipers here, though. We wanna, I wanna make sure. Are they shooting these cuz they're one enemies, two I will get, um... Where, where? Um, the enemies, but we also get, um... Use of this healing, and we do have a, uh... Uh, the-the-the perk that I have on the, uh... The case, uh, apparently gives us like forty percent extra healing on using, when we use vipers. Not great, but at least it's something, uh... Probably gonna get attacked here with them. Here is this lost... Probably have to go under to get to it. Something in the water right there, I can speak. There's plenty of vipers around. At least we can use it for healing. Lost one. That's all the blue medallions done, so we can catch that in later. Hexagon piece. Uh, which we can place when we get back. So again, I can, I know I can sell these for, uh, sages, but I just don't wanna sell them as of yet cuz, uh, they could have uses later. I'll sell them if I get to a point where this is all full, cuz then, uh, then I can figure out like what I need to sell, cuz, uh... The-the good thing is, is that when we get multiples of like the same thing, they count that. Actually, in that case, it might actually be more beneficial to put stuff into areas mentioned, not sell them. Alright, cuz I believe that you can un, uh, null them or whatever. Um... On the left, there's a small key. And then we get the hook. I guess I mean, like here would lead to... Actually, we haven't made up this way, uh, we-we haven't made up to this, uh, as far as I can remember, so we can head up to there, do this, and then we'll go and grab what we need. Hearing enemies, but... Up shore if I... Or might just turn it, or we should... I can, I didn't see anything else up here, but I would drop us down, um... Like, does it, there are another, wasn't there a, uh... Maybe if I drop down, it's like, still... No, there's a, there's a... Uh... It's giving me at least a good... Surveillance of knowing what's up here. Uh, someone's around and I can't see them. I can hear someone, but I don't see them. Okay, randomly like... That's, I will drop down to grab that, so I can get it. Um, I can get some, whatever this is, too. Handgun ammo! Funny. Uh, well, I have a bunch of, uh, healing vipers, so I can use that, um, or I can just use the, uh... Uh, or I can just use this to buff my healing. Uh, I think... It's another viper laying around, so wanna grab that. Be good for healing. I can't even fit it in, um... Already full HP as well. I can't fit it in because, uh... Move. So let's equip the egg. The left room has, uh, the... Key that we're looking for, and the right room has... The right room has, uh, the... Uh, the right room has the boat fuel. Okay. Key. And... Sages. But I don't know if they, I-I didn't check myself to see if the increase for the cases is still the same, is it still ten thousand or not? Have the... Boat fuel. And I think we make our way back to... Chicken egg. Uh, can I, okay, can't even fit that in, can I? Uh...
No.
Uh, but I can craft something. We need handgun ammo. The chicken eggs are good for, uh... Boat fuel. I-I-I do appreciate that, at least in this, uh, uh, in this game, the items that we're, uh, required to grab, like... Boat fuel or the things that are required to be in our case, so, um... Because we don't need to carry them around in our case, uh, we, uh, can... They're considered key items, but we don't need to, um... Uh, like, I-I don't think we have a limit to the amount of key items we can hold. And we pretty much make our way back, um... So we're gonna head back to the merchant. Uh... There's a... We're gonna head back to the merchant, not only to finish the, uh, we can finish off the merchant quest for that, and we can also finish off the... Uh, we can also get a treasure as well, before we head back to the boat. Make our way back. The way back is the way that we went up this way, so... Just let's get back down. I think this also explains why there was enemies back here that attacked us. If I'm heading back this way, I need to, um... How do I get back again, cuz, uh... It was, I, I'm sorry, we have to head up to the... The thing, uh, up here. It's head up the ladder here, so... The area back there, where you... Think if you remember. That one's following us. Back we go. But we're not going to the boat yet, we're going to, uh, the merchant. The, turn in the request as well as, um, we can turn in the request as well as, um, get the, use the, um... Uh, turn in the request as well as use the... Um... A small key that we obtain to get another treasure. Right way, so, yep. I think the treasure that they're talking about is this, here. And we'll grab the, uh... Get the treasure, and then... Now that's another thing I'm noticing, is when the air is lit up like this, I think it means that it's like, we're going to worry about, um... Are you hurting? I was just holding it. Um... We'll go here, grab this, and then back, towards the guy. See if I can, uh, upgrade the ace, I guess. Use the small key here. And brass pocket watch. Um, I'm trying to keep my treasures as much as possible, only so that, uh... If they need to be used with something else, we'll... Head back to him, we will...
So that's a request done and dusted, eh? Good stuff, mate.
All good.
Nice work. Got a selection of good things on sale.
So, we have so many old vipers again.
Ruby's all rubbish, it makes no difference, the price, we're perfect. You're a real professional.
Here you go.
Good stuff, stranger.
Um... Uh, okay, so nothing changes, alright, um... I was thinking that, like, we could keep, uh, we can't keep, uh, buying, we can only buy it whenever they give it to us, um... But I, I just realized, it's like, we only get, um... I thought we could keep buying upgrades for the case, but I guess we have to... Maybe there'll be more upgrades for the case when we come back to, uh, other things, oh. Um, what can we buy though? Uh, vault throw is 8,000, it's like...
Anything else I can help you with?
Look, I don't wanna trade for the... I don't wanna trade for things that I can get elsewhere, cause, um... It's like, I don't, I don't really think I need... Like, even if I wanted to buy more of these weapons, I, I don't have the space. That's the bolt action rifle, uh... We don't really need the scope, we don't need first aid supplies, flash grenades, I need to craft. Uh, no, we can, if we buy this, we can craft, use gunpowder plus large resources to make flash grenade. I, I, I'm not really making flash grenades, uh... Craft bolts with large resources and knives, which, again, I don't need them. I should repair the combat knife, only because I know this can't ever, all of the, all of the other, um... All of the other, um... All of the other, um... Things can only be, uh... Like, uh, this knife can't, this knife can break, but it can't be, like, doesn't get repaired from our thing, I think, maybe I should just...
Give that the care it deserves, mate.
And it can increase the durability of the knife as well, it means it will last longer.
Your weapons are in good hands, mate, I'll see you right.
Like, what can we sell? Like, I, I can sell a lot of these things here, but I don't really... Uh, I wanna keep them just in case. Um... Now that I think about it, it's like, I should, uh... If I get durability up on the knife, it's going to, um...
Molding a weapon to suit your specific needs. There you are, as you wished.
Now it'll take longer to... We'll head back to the boat now. So the knife that we have, uh, sorry, the, the combat knife that we have... Uh, this, like, like, the kitchen knife, for example, the kitchen knife can, uh, has, it will go away, and once it breaks, it breaks. The combat knife, however, will break, but it will never disappear from our thing, so we can always come back and repair it. Which means that we can also upgrade the knife, uh, as well. I did consider that when I had the chance to do so, I probably should have done that, uh, as, considering how much stealth I'm doing, I should have probably also... Kept that into account, so I could have upgraded that instead of the thing as well, cause, uh, even, like, other knives we get later on are gonna... Thing as well. I don't think it really matters. Like, I would have bought the upgrade for the case anyway. And if we do need to think, we can sell, because of the way that the, uh, game was mentioning it, um... We can sell... Uh... Doing the upgrades for the weapons is fine, um... We get, but, and then it says that, uh, when we go and sell it, we get pretty much all that back, so... Uh, they're saying, like, essentially, they're saying, like, every time we upgrade, we will get, uh, I guess, we need one more hex, I can... Place this here. But it's gonna be a puzzle. And then we, uh, so we've done the brass pocket watch, uh, got that, and I submitted the rest back. And then we have pretty much a pulse void, so... As we saw before, we already know what we're gonna be facing, so... See how that goes. Um... Okay, so pretty much, uh, what we end up doing is... I went back, got the thing, and then I had a look what was available, I thought there was gonna be another case upgrade, but there wasn't. So I had a look at what, like, report, um, but the good thing is that when you upgrade a weapon, uh, the upgrade for the weapon, like, adds to the price, I guess you could say. So we spent, uh, I guess we spent like $5,000 on the, um, like, $2,500 that we spent was the, uh, to repair the knife, but we spent $5,000 to upgrade the knife, but then if we go to sell it, I think that $5,000 gets added to the knife, if that makes sense, because we've added the upgrades. So essentially, they're enticing you to... They're enticing you to upgrade the weapons, uh, because then you can sell them back at a higher price later down the line if you find something that's better. So if we find a better pistol, and we replace the pistol that we currently have, um, I, you can sell that pistol that I've aged for thing and... Also, boat fuel, and... So, get, do the boss, wait. Oops. I know we spent time doing the shooting gallery, um... But again, we're over two and a half hours into the screen, and... It's really good that we've got the, that done. So I forgot to save, I forgot to save before, I, uh, I was supposed to save at the, uh, I forgot to save at the, uh... Uh, I forgot to save again, at, uh... What's it say? I forgot to save at, uh, remember what happened last time, the, beginning of attack by that, that thing? I, I was supposed to save, um, after I completed a lot of the stuff, and I just couldn't, but... Uh, okay, L1 plus R2 is, uh... I guess we had to... Why does this remind me of Assassin's Creed, uh, uh, Black Flag? With the harpoon in there? Why, why? Well, I remember all that, I remember doing all that stuff. Again, we have, at least we have infinite, uh... At least we have infinite, yeah, this reminds me. This is very much like the, uh... This is very much just, this is just like the, uh... This is just like hunting the whales in, uh, can I come back out? It's just like hunting the whales from Assassin's Creed 4. Wait? Uh, where are you? Oh, see, uh, coming back around. That's, that's gonna kill us if we don't do anything about it. Yep, this is very much like, this is, I guess, where they got the inspiration for the mini-game for, uh... Black Flag. Hunting this, uh, lake monster. Alright, he's gonna pop back out. Uh, assuming he pops back out, we can just throw another harpoon at it. Go. Where is he? Trying to look for where the hunters? Oh, there, that's the finish joint. I thought we, I thought we just took that joint, I thought we were at the joint. I guess if we found like QG, we, we would have shit. I can't imagine what this is gonna be like on the harder difficulty. Uh, I don't think we can... This, this is a... I can't imagine what this is gonna be like on the harder difficulty, because, uh, our boat's already taken nearly half damage, and this is easy as difficult. Like, I don't think we can swap to... I don't believe that we can swap to, um... I don't believe we're able to swap to, um... But that's a lot of damage. We're not able to swap to, uh, weapons, yeah? Kill it? Let's just cut. Oh, okay, we killed. Got a trophy for it, at least. Nope, it's dead. Okay, that, that was actually, can, can, we won an assist difficulty, and it took away two thirds of our health, uh... I don't know what it's gonna be like when we have to fight it on the harder difficulty. Wait, what did he, did he notice something in the water? It's the end of, like, this will be the end of chapter three. Alright, uh, so I'll sync with the trophy, because... Oops, it... Fidel log, that was a boss for you. Uh, we're five and a half hours into the game, we've only done those three chapters. Granted, we have been searching, I don't think, but, uh... Chapter three and Fidel log, a lager. Uh, so that, that chapter took us, uh, I would say it took two and a half hours, probably more like, uh... Two hours maybe, because we spent, I don't know how much time I spent in the shooting gallery. Um, no deaths, four enemies killed, accuracy, things, I'm not worried about, like, trying to be perfect. We wanna make sure we save, then... Look, I just, I forgot to save, uh, the previous, uh, thing, and... Chapter four. So, chapter four, uh... I believe there's 16 chapters in the game, so we're already a quarter through the game, or headed towards it anyway. Which, uh, considering that... Uh, I finished Resident Evil 3's playthrough in three parts, and it was like 11, 12 hours, something like that. It's gonna be even might way longer than... I'm gonna say it. Okay, so we just walk up in the middle of... Walk up in the middle of the ocean, because there won't be a light without. Uh, let's check the... Where are we now? So I guess we crossed the lake. Interesting, okay, so there's actually treasure in the middle of the lake, um, so where, where did we start? We were... We were, uh, here. We were here. And then... There's treasure there, there's treasure there, um... I guess we use this area as a traversal now, I, I, I don't know if we're gonna get attacked any further. Neural cave, I haven't been here. I don't know what this is. Um... Uh, I, I actually wanna check something. How far out can we read the map? Okay, so we started like here. We got a lot, a lot to cover. Um... Okay. I guess we have, we'll have to head out later, and may, may, maybe we'll get a chance to head out later to grab these? I don't actually know. Uh, but, how do I do that? Red, it's chapter four. Uh... Okay, so we don't have to bike right now. We have a fight that we have to deal with. We have to buy, then we have to extract it. We're gonna have to feed things, we're gonna... That was a good one. Find a key to the shop, thanks. I guess she's just gonna be our common person all the way. Yep. Um, I assume I'm supposed to, yeah. Oh, I'm supposed to get that out. Oops, it's not, alright. This, this area here looks like it's on map, I mean, obviously, I don't need to, uh, explore absolutely every inch of this area, but I wanna make sure that I... Uh, I wanna make sure that I explore, so I can get, um... Yeah, enemies. I wanna make sure that I, uh, get as much, uh... Resources as possible. Is that going to the left? Here I go, here, here, uh... I wanna make sure I've got all the resources that I can. Before I follow the, uh, horses. They probably lead the same way, because like, uh, right down there, maybe. Maybe I'm just gonna lead to the same ship. Alright. Okay, I'm familiar, more familiar with these now, from the, I'm more familiar with these from the, uh... I'm more familiar with this type of creature than I am with, uh... I suppose it just keeps shooting its head, I guess? I think it's over with. Another one's coming. Okay, I... Okay. There's certain enemies that are just gonna... There are a better way to, to deal with these? Because shooting them in the head is gonna make that thing pop out.
Yeah. What the fuck? What is this place? Some kind of shrine? Same mark from the church.
Alright, so I have to do something here. Uh... I'm entering the room right after the hand sent you into the pool. Have to interact with the blue. Okay, so we gotta place some stuff on the hand.
It's the lake.
Okay, there's the map. Wait, what? Oh, it just, I was wondering what just happened. Okay, so the location of the mural is here. And there's a location of the mural, which is right here as well. Okay, so we're gonna go in, let's go first, okay. Then we return to here. Okay. Uh, oh, that's a boat. That's a boat. That's, so that's the, I guess with the boat, we'll, we can travel from a lot of places, actually. Um, okay, so... We need to go to both the locations to find items that will allow us to get the item, but, um... Uh, so we have a few things that we have to go on, dude. Uh... What we need to do is we need to... Uh... We're looking for the old ways shrine key. But what's this? Wow, that's the... Right, oh, that's the location of the mural, so we have to go there for that, and then we've also got... I'll get to this area first, just so I can give off the shield. Uh, oh, they mean these things here. Yeah, so these things here, I don't have to... Okay, so now we can head back up the murals, do those, um... Or press it there as well. That's small. Uh, egg hunt. Someone fetched me a rare gold chicken egg. What will I do with it? Well, sometimes it's more fun not knowing, right? Uh, request. Sell a gold chicken egg, none specified. Okay, so there's, I don't know where to find the gold chicken egg. Get three of those. That's, um, okay, so we have to find a gold chicken egg. Um... So... I guess what we do is we head back, well, we'll probably have to head back and... We're probably gonna have to head back and, uh, do all the ways shrine key stuff, anyway, and I don't even remember... Where the ways shrine points are. Uh, because I've got all different types of stuff that's locked, and so I'm probably better off just... Going back when I can find them. Uh, boat dock into the broken wall, um... So there's a spot on the east side of the lake. Where there's a chicken farm, um... Then you'll find a golden egg, this will be the simple load, don't worry about it for now. And then I have to sell that to the egg thing, so it's a symbol, um, alright. Now, so there's a new boat waiting for us, and, um... Alright, so before we go and do any collectible stuff, we're going back to things, so we wanna go to, we need to, first of all, we need to go to the middle of the lake. First place that we had. We're gonna head to the middle of the lake first. Alright, so... Okay, we can still use harpoon, so does that mean we can still get attacked here? Or are we using the harpoons for other things? Alright, so before we continue on to... Uh, the next, we don't need to do the egg hunt. We're getting some collectibles, so we're gonna go here first, because there's treasures. Oh, okay, we can actually go to those ones. Okay, that's... That one's here. Grab the treasures thing here. Alexandrites? Other treasure that's here? Red nine. Uh, how am I gonna fit this in? Because, uh, I don't know how much space it takes up. It takes up six slots, which I don't have. Slots. Um, yeah, I don't remember where the last... I don't remember where the last, um... Save point was. I didn't see a typhoid. Um... I didn't see a typhoid back here. That was not why. How am I gonna get to this? Um... I, I need six slots. I guess I can try and make, I have one slot, um... I don't need to heal. But that's not gonna work. Inventory is full, make sure to send this to stor- oh, wait, you can send it to storage? Does that, is that, does that work? Saying that you can set, if your inventory is full, make sure to send this to storage, so it counts as you picking it up. You can sell it from storage later if you don't want it. Does that mean that we can send it if... But I, uh... So I have no room right now, and, uh, for me to get room, I'd need to either make stuff or thing. I mean, I'll, I'll try and make something, see if I can... Get some room, but, uh, I don't know how much room I'm gonna be able to make. That freed up two spots. And then if I made the other ammo, it's going to... Free up... Like, freeze, but then the issue is that then it would take up more space as well. And I can't put it away. At least it will clear out some space, but... Okay, we got the craft bonus as well, so we made even more, even though I don't have a submachine gun. It, it cleared up three spots, but that's not enough. Sorry, it cleared up four spots. I don't think there's anything else that I can do, because I have a red herd that I can't put with anything, because I don't have any other... Things that I don't need to heal right now, so I guess I, I just, it's saying that I can send it to storage. Right, okay, so... That, that's handy that they've done that. If you don't pick something out, you can just send it to the typhoid storage, but I, I, I don't understand what, they gave us more... I guess that's the thing, they gave us more space, but then they've made it so that you can't send everything back to storage, which I, I just don't understand, so... My plan is to see how this pairs to the actual current pistol that we have. Um... If it's better than the current pistol that we have, then I can at least, uh, swap them out. Thought I could make it, but I guess not. Alright, next up is, um, east, and... Gonna find a yellow blue. We, we would have needed to, um, make a, we would have needed to make some space, anyway. There's the chicken farm. Right here? I see, uh... These are sparkles, so... Have these for extra money? A lot of, uh, power, I think. Controls for this, so, anything. I actually wonder, though, why I have a, um, a harpoon? They're gonna be used for... Uh, so I think I made here. There's a, uh... This game was doing like, uh, this game was doing like Assassin's Creed fishing before that, this game was doing, uh... The boat riding around for exploration before the war was doing it. Alright, so here we have to make sure I get that as well. Uh, you can then walk around the back of the area to find a gold chicken egg on the ground. I was about to pick up too much stuff. Um, and then walk around the back of the area to find a gold chicken egg on the ground, which you self-merchant to complete the quest. Um, there's only two golden chickens in the game, and I don't know what chicken egg. Um... Alright, so I'm almost about to fill up my inventory, but, uh... Gold chicken egg. Alright, so... Uh, does that count as a, okay, we can actually use it, um... I think, so I can grab whatever I need here. I have a whole bunch of eggs, um, that I can use. I don't think the eggs can be used for anything apart from healing, but they do give good healing. The first aid spray it is. Oh, I, that's handy as well, okay, so... Anytime I need... Um, that, that might also explain things, well... Um... I can just send things to storage whenever I want to send them. So like, right now, it's like, I'm a... I can send this to storage and then grab the, uh, the eggs that are around here. I, I just realised that I can do that now. I don't think there's any other eggs that are around. Um... Gotta make sure that we do not sell the, uh, gold chicken egg. Why am I not seeing the gold chicken egg in... Uh... Any area? I don't even see it. I got a bunch of eggs here, but they're not, none of them are gold. Oh, there it is, there. Okay, we can actually use that to restore health. Uh, no. It's also discarded. You can equip it to us as well, so we can throw it at people, I guess. Um, okay, so that, that's handy to know, um, if I'm running out of space, I can just send, uh, first aid sprays... As well as, uh, weapons to the store. as well as, uh, weapons to the storage, but I can't retrieve anything from the bridge. Um... Okay, so that's- that's interesting. I didn't realise that. I have red 9, the red 9 pistol, which is probably gonna be better than what we currently are using. Um, which means if that's better, I can replace this pistol with that pistol. Because, uh, they're both gonna use the same amount of ammo. Uh, so now we need to go to... Uh, here. Then we have to get the blossoms head by doing a puzzle. Alright, so I'm... Well, fortunately, you can't... That's another thing, it's like, I- I need to make sure I'm not use that golden egg as the- as a thing, because there's only two of them in the game. And I wanna make sure that I don't use it, but it's like, we can't just put it in storage, which is not making sense. They gave us more storage space, but then they allowed us to... They- they didn't allow us to, um... Fuck. They didn't allow us to do that, also, which is a bit silly. There are one of them here, isn't it? Before we do this, look around, give me that, act me a break. But I do need to sell that egg for something. I... Oh, okay, so th- these- these are probably gonna be a clue. I get through there. I wonder if I can shoot that? I don't even need to shoot, because I can, uh... I can get it, uh, well, I need to shoot it, but I can... Uh, get it by hitting back down here. But I'm hoping that I can get more, uh, upgrades for the suitcase, because obviously that means we can, uh... Uh, there's gonna be a puzzle at some point. How do we get into that room? Because I saw here, there's a... Guess we can't get that yet, because, like, we... There's a ladder that's on the other side, so... Um, alright, so pretty much, I think we have to just interact with the puzzle. Uh, I did see some symbols up the top, so I'll just see what the puzzle's asking me to do. Okay, so the puzzle is, uh... Okay, so we can only move... What's coming? Can only move, uh, the... Uh... This one. Now we can press any- okay, oh, it's a combination, right? It's a combination, I think. Um, alright, so I did see the symbols up the top, but I need to figure out which symbols we can press. Um... We've got like three squiggly lines. Three squiggly lines, um, uh, the P. Uh, a P, a SD, and a, uh... Three things on there. They're fourth in combination? It's, uh... Go back to... So I said three ingesses. Uh, then I said, uh, it's like the one with the... Uh... Okay, for one that's got, uh... This one. Uh, then, uh, we're looking for one that's got an SD, uh, once. And it's like, this one is the last one, because I remember there being three. That's the last one, um... Which one would have, uh... This one here? Not that one. No, it's this one. Those two are correct. Uh... Uh, nah, that would be right. Uh, that would be right... I think this one? What is the... Okay, there's- there's something missing. Um, the first two were correct, because I- I saw them in the other one had, um... It was like... Down and a bump, and then it... Uh... But, uh, this one here is the last one. Unless that's the... Okay, I- I think I just got completely wrong. Okay, so tha- that was the last one. Okay, that one there was the last one. And then that means that this one here was the... We saw the squiggly lines, and then after the squiggly lines, we saw that... Oh, I think I know why. We saw part of that, and then that might have- maybe that was what it was. I knew that this one was last, because I didn't see any others. So I- I think there was only three that I expected. I thought there was four. Blossom's head is right there. Hex is gonna be safe, so if the hex is gone, puzzle will be out. Blossom's head? Oh, it's leaving. Pretty cool fact, uh, this is a match we can hit up here, and then we can drop that pin of rubies. Get this one. It's everything, yeah? Uh, got the ruby, uh... So go back onto the boat, and you wanna go to... That. The red point there on the map, that was up before. Now we need to go... Uh, back here. Uh, we return here, and there's some enemies, and then have to make our way around the north bells to find out. There's- there's gonna be a wasteline somewhere, uh, on here. Gonna be one of these. Well, oh wait, okay, so we wanna head to the wasteline, which is right here. Everywhere else, we can't head right now. Uh... Door with insignia, actually. We have... We have the door, the insignia dorking up, um... Do you have that? Um... What is that? I don't remember. Did I miss a treasure? Because it's like, there's a- there's a treasure right here that I- I haven't got. I don't remember where this is. Isn't this where the town hall was? If this was wha- was this where the town hall was? Or is it somewhere else? It doesn't find out when we get... Actually, no, it wasn't, because the... One of the areas had like, the area with the town hall was the area with all the ma- many houses, so we have to head back to Lakeside Settlement. I just realised, there's a- I haven't been back here. And it's like, we do have the... I- I don't know what insignia this is, but it- I feel like I could enter here and do something. Um, and what this is here, I don't... It's like, I... How did I miss a treasure, though? It's like, just couldn't get it. Find out. This way, right? Thank you. Now I'm gonna meet some enemies. Wants us to get this. How do we do up that? Okay, so actually, we're heading this way anyway, but this one, this thing here, for some reason, I don't have a tr- have this treasure. Not sure why. I might actually just check, because this air- this door might not be open yet. That might be the other thing, I suppose. I'll have to check if that door was open. Uh, because if it is, I could miss the treasure somehow. Like it is, like the... Oh, there it is. Hey, you're gonna throw the... For a second, I thought you were gonna throw the... Is there? Hold on, I'm trying. I don't remember this area. Actually, I... Wasn't this area the... The starting area? It's like, what? Did I miss a treasure? I think I missed a treasure again, somehow. This- this makes sense. How did I miss it was in here? Because it's like, there's an actual treasure right here that I don't have. I'm- I'm gonna head there just... Yeah, I've been here. I- I- somehow I missed a treasure. I mean, I guess we were gonna return here anyway, but, uh... I don't remember what was in here. Or am I not supposed to... Nah, I've def- I've been here, because I remember looking. Here now. I guess I just forgot to pick up a treasure in here? Alright, well, we'll, uh, take care of that then. Didn't be any more enemies in here anyway. Yeah, I- I... Oh, this is... I know where this is. This is the, uh... This is where we, uh, now I remember where we are. This was where we found, uh, this is where we found Louise or whatever. Uh, okay, so we book up the wasteline for this point. Uh, then we head back, and then we now have to open up this area, and then, um, yeah, so first of all, we're gonna go left. Uh, because there's gonna be a, uh... Quest, and we need to catch a fish in- in front of the boathouse, which will be the... And then there's also gonna be a castellan in here, um, that will grab it. Alright, "Catch me a big fish. Uh, could someone catch the gigantic fish that lives in the lake for me? Visual has been a use software. This photo should help you find it." Uh, "Request sell a lark, a lunker bass, uh, area, see attached photograph, and..." That's... Oh, so, okay, so now I can see my, I can now, um... Because I've now used the insignia key across the entire, uh, thing, I can now sell it. So when I see the merchant the next time, I'm gonna sell it, because, uh, that's an extra 2,000 money that we no longer need, um... We are getting full load, uh, but I... I wonder if we can expand the treasure, because, uh, right now, we're nearly full, uh, but I'm trying to, uh... I'm trying to make sure that, because, uh, if we do get full, what my plan will be is I can fill up some of these with jewels, if necessary, uh, to save some space. But I need to figure out if I can, if, uh, I need to save certain things, uh... Uh, if I get, I wanna try and... I wanna try and make sure that my, when I sell something, that I can sell it at the la- latest possible age. Um, I'm looking at key items, like, we can have six key items and I guess a bunch of things. I don't know what happens if we fill... Um, I'm looking at key items, like, we can have six key items and I guess a bunch of things, I don't know what happens if it fills up. So, I guess we'll find out. What the hell is going on here? Alright, so, up the ladder and... I guess the next area? Wait, that's Ashley's, no? Hang on one second. Uh, climb the ladder towards the forest altar area, I don't wanna progress too far, because if this is Ashley right now, I need to uh... This is Ashley right now, I need to make sure that I get the objective done. I need to make sure that I get the objective done, uh, need to get the castellan first, uh, I don't wanna... Castellan's only available per chapter, if this is the end of the chapter, um... Look through the fence on the north side. That's knife, for a second, I thought it was gonna be perfect. Alright, need to look to the north side. There's another small key. Mount powder, um... Hear it here? On the ground. Here, right? I'm actually north for a second there, I need to check, I just have to... Gotta be on the ground somewhere. That is dead. Oh, there it is. Okay, uh... Got everything here, um... Backtrack here, I'm gonna make sure that uh... Make sure that I haven't got anything, make sure that I have anything. Green herb, uh... Can I combine... If I can combine the green herb with the red herb, that should be okay. Do green plus power, and then I can take the... Then I can now put this... Here. Can I interact with this? Nope. Got this bit surprised, uh... Grab the small key, and we have a... Back down. For some reason, Leon doesn't like, uh... Leon doesn't like to climb lap-down ladders. Thank you, dogs. Good sign. Uh, where am I heading? I'm heading down the line. Wait. Oh, up see? Oh wait, may I be infected by the parasite too? Okay, I didn't realise that. Trying to shoot the parasite, but I can't really do it. Oh wow. Oh, there's multiple of them. And there's, religious. Oh, and that's off. Okay. Like, this is gonna be very uh, painful experience. Don't have any, uh... I don't have any more, uh, why is he not shooting? I, okay, for some reason, I'm not shooting, I don't know why. Please play that guy, this is, uh... Edge, uh... Think he's gone? Sound like it, I don't reach for him, still somewhere, I can't see it. Where the hell are you, like? Where, where is it going, like? You please stay in one spot, I hate dog enemies. If they're gone, I... Now we head back into the... House, yeah, so, okay, so that, we head back into here, and then... Okay, so we were supposed to get these later, that's fine, um, I, I don't know, so, anyways, dealt with, we're gonna get these. And then we head back into the boat. I, I... Dog enemies here are a little more annoying. Um, alright, we're in here, we need to... Uh, did I tell you about a... Uh... We use a, I think we use the small key on this. Small key on this, but yeah, the reason I'm being so particular with the small keys is that we, we don't use certain small keys on it, certain, uh, things, boxes out of other stuff. Gold bar. Uh... Now we head back to the boat. Back to the boat, and then to... Oh, I see, I can see the uh... See fish there? Head back to the boat, and... Saying to make a manual save, I don't even think I can make a save, you can't make saves here. But I mean, uh, back in the boat, west side of the lake, where you launch the boat, and chop, and chop, um... West side of the lake. Uh, I guess I mean... Like, I'm trying to think what they mean, they said the west side of the... Where did we launch the boat from last time? I think it's, it's at the west side of the... Back in the boat, head to the west side of the lake, where you launch the boat, and chop, and chop, I'm trying to remember where I relaunched the boat, is it here? Uh... Highly recommended to make a manual save for the puddle, uh... Well, talking about... Talking about like, uh... The back of the, oh, right, that's where we have to go, we're going to the, the hexagon. Uh, this, this area, so it's this area, here then. Just, we've already done that, um... That's where, we're heading to... I'm gonna make a manual save, so I'll go ahead and do that. Like, I, I wanna hit the salt puddle. I think that's where they want to do that. Uh, because we, uh, they said where we launched the boat from, I can guess, yeah, we've seen, we launched the boat from here, and then... But enemy, anything. We uh, can just go straight? I'm guessing we also have fish in there as well, because uh... Forgot to remember to sell that. How did I miss that? I don't know why you can't do that. Well, I like that we can add, um, like, all the accelerators just makes it pretty boring. Need to make a manual save, so uh, head back to... Uh... I know where the, where, where we are. I'll just head back to the... Not that I'll need it, I had to go on here. Just in case we make a mistake. Although, I have a feeling what I'm supposed to do, it's not in the, in our... Do what the guide says, just in case, uh, something goes wrong. And the save point's like right up here anyway, and we can get some other things done. I can also sell the, one of the keys off, but I needed it. Well, I don't think it's selection. Oh, okay, he actually does have a new, uh, oh, he does have a... That means it does upgrade as we go, uh, all the swords upgrade as we go, I guess we have it. Fifty thousand for a rocket launcher, uh... Another case upgrade, um... It's twenty thousand, but, um... And... Patchable mines. I'll sell! We don't need the uh, insignia key anymore. Uh, we can also sell the golden uh, chicken egg. Uh, I need to do that for a... Old chicken egg is out to sell for the egg, I expect to sell this. Seventeen thousand right now, um... Obviously, I'd like to get the... You know what, we can also sell those as well, um... This stuff, this stuff, and this as well. Uh... Like, I, I don't wanna buy... Don't wanna buy the, like, this is a submachine gun. Means I could then use the ammo, but I... Didn't take into account when I first... Uh... Can trade things as well, uh, that gives us drop wa, increases the drop rate of resources, I'd rather increase my hangover. Uh, so, treasures, high power strip, elegant mask. Stock. Uh... Trying to think about what I wanna do, uh... If I buy... If I buy the, that, that's another thing I should do, um, I have seventeen thousand... Money, uh, I should check to see if that weapon is any good. Before I do this, I should have, uh, because I, I had to come here and sell the things anyway. Just uh, before I do anything, any purchasing. Obviously, I would like to get the ash, uh, the, the ace upgrade, because the ace upgrade will allow us to carry more items, um... Okay, uh, I can probably reorganise this space, because I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, I've got nine spaces. Um... I need to check what, if, if the weapon that I currently have is better than the weapon that I... Uh, I need to reorganise my space. Need a room for a... That, that should be fine, uh... Uh, so... This should be better than what I currently am using. Okay. Uh, I'm trying to how I do a comparison between guns. Why is it not... One's considered, they're both considered handgun. And this one here has less ammo storage in it. Uh... I... Don't know what happens if I do this. So, that handgun itself uses specific, uh, ammunition. Um, it's probably not as good then. Um... I'll need to check what it is, though, before I do this. Right, because I... Oh, I can store it away rather than... Store it away. I can store it away rather than... Trying to see. Because I, I don't wanna buy... I can buy this for ten thousand. That will mean I can now have access to it. And I can also buy this, which would also give me, I think, this is better than... I think this is better for... Because I have more sub, uh, I have more rifle ammo than submachine gun ammo, but... I don't have the room for this. Right now, I don't think. That, that's a big issue, finding room. Um... Want to see the difference. Like, I can upgrade its power or something out of the goal, so it's, it's better. It just has less ammo. Um, but for some reason it's only showing that I have five ammo for it. But that also might be because I don't have enough ammo left over, um... Does one, it does more damage. It just holds less and reloads slower. The thing is, is that I can also just upgrade this weapon and then... Upgrade this weapon and then I can sell the other one. Well... Trying to think about what I want. I don't need, I don't wanna buy any of these right now, because they're... Uh... Everything else has been, I mean, sold the stuff that we can and everything. I need more... I'd like to get the case upgrade, but I have twenty thousand. I don't have twenty thousand. Like, the rocket launcher would be good, but it's only a one-time rocket launcher. I don't need a one-time rocket launcher to spend money on that. And I have all these recipes that I don't really need. Um... Don't wanna use a bolt. I have submachine gun as well as rifle ammo. I just don't have the room for them. And I can only buy one of these weapons, and at that point I would rather buy the TMP than the... Um, I'd rather buy the TMP than the rifle, because I, it's smaller amount of space as well as, uh... Smaller amount of space as well as, uh... Thing. Now, I'm trying to think, like, they use the same amount of ammo. Like, the handguns use the same ammo, so obviously here, um, I have... Uh, like, this, this fires, this has less power. But the, it holds more ammo, but the reason why it holds more ammo is because I upgraded it to hold more ammo. Um... But I can upgrade this to hold more ammo and increase everything else. So I feel like I can probably... What I should do is I should sell this. Uh, and then upgrade on this. Now look at how much it, like, costs, uh, how much things sell for. And now I have all these treasures. So I only need one handgun, because you, why, why do I need multiple different handguns? Because I can just paint handgun. Um, like, it sells thirteen and a half thousand. And I invested, I've invested in it, uh, a couple of upgrades to the... All I've invested into is a couple of upgrades to ammo capacity. That I can then get back with. So what I should do is... If I sell it, uh, I can then... I know that what I've been doing, invested in for later is... I only need one handgun. I have a shotgun. I have the shotgun and I've got two handguns, so it's like I'm better off selling this. And then by selling this, I can then all upgrades on the other one later, because I know it's gonna be better. See, like, I, my, uh... My combat knife is worth nine thousand seven hundred fifty-nine, because I did an upgrade for it. Uh, to upgrade its, uh, durability. I'm trying to look at what else I need to do. Uh, now I have thirty thousand. I'll buy the ace. That'll give me more space. And then now, uh, I can either buy, if I buy the submachine gun, I can use the submachine. There's no reason for me to sell. I, I don't wanna sell any of these yet until... Ah, I get to a point, but once I've got everything sold, then I can. I wanna keep it as long as possible, um... Find every weapon. That seems pretty good. Alright, so I can either buff my weapons or buff my... Oh, I can buff, I, I think it's better for me to buy the TMP. I can then buy... If I buy this, I can then use, I have another weapon to use, and I have the ammo that I can... Uh... Like, all the rest of the stuff I don't really need. Or I can upgrade the weapons like currently have, which I think it's better for me to just, weapons that I have before. Now if I go into... Obviously, when I come back here for later, I can... So if I have a look at how much, I don't, how much does it sell for? I'm wanting to see what it... I just bought the TMP. Okay, so I bought the TMP, I bought the TMP for ten thousand and it's worth five thousand, but... Uh, so I lose half of its value, however, I do get the value back with the other upgrades as well. And then I don't need anything else. Alright, I think what I did is... Alright, case upgrade. Now I can add, uh, I should have already... That's what I'm currently using. I don't know why we lose the bullets that I had to the... In the current weapon, because I can't refill them out as well. That, that's really stupid. I didn't have that many bullets left anyway, but... Need to put the shortcut in as well. Uh, so I sold that, I sold my old handgun. For this, because I can improve this from the point. And... Now I have the... Light machine gun, a sub, sorry, a submachine gun, as well as a... Uh, shotgun. Then I have to reopen this. Uh... Everything else is, I don't think I can get anything else. Everything else is gonna be based on, everything else is the origin. Something else that I can buy. But I could have bought the rifle, but I was looking at it, like, I prefer, I prefer having the handgun and the rifle. And I needed the space, maybe. Like, I could have bought... Upgrades to knives and stuff. The knife is still working, yes? Um, I'm gonna put, also make sure I put these in, all kinds as well. Uh... Now I have access to all those. Fine, game. Of course, like, when it gets to the point where I have to sell treasures, I, uh, gonna have a lot of money that I can use. Uh, so I can go ahead and do that. Alright, let's, uh, go and do the puzzle. So I wanna actually do the puzzle versus... Twelve in the guy, because that's what I did last time. I just, I, uh, went to the puzzle. So I have a, uh, just an update, but I did. I sold my, I sold the stuff I needed to sell. I... Uh... Sold my pistol that I currently need and using, built the upgrades for it to get some more money, bought the extra ace to get more space. And also I bought the... Uh... A submachine gun. That I can now use. Obviously, like, the gun that I'm using, I can always just, uh, update this. Because, uh, weapons still can as a spring, fun. If I need to sell it, I can sell it. I, I didn't check to see what would happen if I watered again, like, I don't think I can, but... Let's go in. Now, uh, okay, so... I guess every time we rotate one of these, it rotates, uh, okay, so I, um... Okay, so it's like... Uh, three pieces. Um... Alright, so it looks like we're making a... Oh, I think I get it. You take the piece out and then put it... Yeah, that makes sense. Have to, uh... Alright, that piece has to go in the middle. That piece should be the last piece if I move, uh... That piece, if I move that, it's gonna stop something else. Uh, so that means this would move here, because then that, right, yeah, that would move here, because then now we get that. And then... That moving down, that, that would complete it. That, that puzzle is easy, like, puzzle was easy without looking. I didn't even need to help with that, because... Looking at that, it's like that made perfect sense. It's like, once I was already ready to go, you don't need to lose it. Um... Next thing is back in the boat and we have to go to the boat dock. Uh... It is. Yeah? Uh, get back in the boat, drive back to the boat dock. Uh, large fish swimming around in front. Okay, that's what we need, the harpoons. Small fish nearby, the one you need is the biggest fish. When on the boat, facing the boat, has to just swim in a slight circle. I may have to sell that to the boat. Back to the fish. I, I don't get why that puzzle required, why did that puzzle require a, uh... Not sure why that puzzle required a... Need, need to save considering, um... One, a third of the puzzle was already completed, so you leave that alone, and the one piece was one bit away. Uh, we are heading back to the boat dock. Apparently it's out of the water. For a big fish or something. Add it there? That's it? And then just drop like... That's it? Not the best. That was some hard, uh... I need how much space for this? Uh, it's a... Uh, yeah, oh, oh. That was a, uh, a... That's, uh... Like this? Uh... Make a trip into the tunnel where you started the chapter. Where did we start the chapter from? In chapter... Chapter, I read. Chapter four. I don't remember there being a... Mentioning like... Oh, a dock of the merchant's building. And where is the... Also a smaller fish nearby, but the one you need is the biggest fish. When on the boat, facing the boat, has to just swim in. I don't remember where we started. We finished the boat and then it's like get back, uh... Now you can make a trip into the tunnel where you started the chapter from to reach the lower deck. Lower dock of the, uh... But maybe it's... Back on this video, that, not video, the picture. See where they're talking about. Oh, okay, there's a merchant located somewhere else. The merchant located, uh... Oh, there's a merchant located here. This is where they're talking about. Over here. Hey, they're talking about, oh, they're talking about this merchant. Yeah. They're talking about this merchant, the one that we just, uh... I don't know why they're talking about that one. And you can make a trip into the tunnel where you started the chapter from to reach the lower dock of the... I may just... I would, oh, actually we can go there. Think? And you can make a trip into the tunnel where you started from the chapter, I would... Blaming here, like, there's a, is there a... Because there's no dock there. Like, if you look at how docks are supposed to be, this is a dock. And this is a dock. There's no docks here. That makes me wonder. I'm just gonna go to the, the one that I know. There is a ladder here. Oh, wait a second, this area, um, that's right, this area. I, I know, I know where it's, but, um... You can, uh, yeah, because there's a ladder that takes us back to the, that's where, that's where it, oh. We can go through here and that'll save us some time if we don't come back. You also cover, um, I mean, right here. That was what I meant. Uh, this area leads straight to the... Uh, this area leads straight to the merchant, uh... Thing where we can go in. Well, just sell him that fish, we don't need it anymore. Right in our paper quest. That's worth fifteen thousand, um... I think four... Like, what can we trade, like, um... I don't want this, uh, these are, I, I don't think I need this. Like, scope and stock, I don't think I need either. I don't think anything here, uh... I've already bought everything here. I need to repair the mine. Um... And my capacity would be good, because uh... Does that, let me just check if that raises the thing by six thousand, originally it was five thousand. No, it wasn't, it does raise it by, it does raise it by a lot, though. So we do get the majority of it, I think that the benefit is that yes, we spent like ten grand on this, and we only get five back if we sell it, however, we start adding upgrades to it, the upgrade might cost like seven thousand, and then we get like six thousand of it back, so we're not losing out on a huge amount. Back to this boat. Back to the boat, and uh... Gonna go to another waste shrine. Which is located, uh, please... Alright, to the next waste shrine. Uh, down... Here, I think? Pressure. Hey, there's handgun over here that I didn't pick up. Last time I missed that. Get back in the boat, because then I look at this, it's like we go down... I guess it's like up this way. Um... Get back in the boat, and uh, turn off the engine. This is a waste shrine. Hang on. Straight, pretty much, I guess, it's on, far as the, far as the uh... Get all the the sides, I don't know. I don't want to miss any of these. Okay, so I meant here. Back to there, please. And there's a shrine, plus, uh, another treasure. We use this key here to get this... Splendid angle. I believe that can be encased with, uh... That can be encased with items as well, but uh, certain, like, it actually mentions like certain gems, and it's like, so like, this one here can only be encased, done with rectangular ones, so like the emeralds. Whereas this one here, it has to be like rubies or sapphires. I think there's another treasure up here. Could be another treasure. Ah. Maybe it's for water. Alright, oh, metal cage, I'm sorry. Metal cage, right? That'd be soft. Did I miss the... Oh, I see it up there. Way up there. That's it, right there? Please stop moving. Alright, I'm gonna take a break, and then I'll be back in a second to continue on with this, but we uh, really done. Uh, well, we've got a lot of stuff to do, finding this chapter's right to. It went like, just literally six seconds, six seconds over seven hours around the chapter four, which is like a quarter of the game, so that's actually really amazing. Um... Okay, so we've got that, and now we need to come back into the tunnel. Uh... To get the rest of the items. Alright, so uh, I guess we're heading up this way. Um... Large cave shrine, I don't know where that is. Head back into the tunnel, and you're going to, I guess it's this area. Yep, it's this area, so we have to go to this dock. We go to this dock, and there's some animals. Like a bunch of animals to fight. We need to go here, and then we need to follow the path that we get to the split foot left. Uh... A few things we have to get here. So, head to... Ah? Alright, so... I don't think we can go to the left, I think we have to rush forward. Ready? Don't have a lot of ammo, because I don't have, I can't get ammo. Never what anyway, when we were coming out of the house. Hopefully I can find some. I feel I can find some lying around. See, they all use the same handgun, I mean, so if we find a better handgun, we, it's better off for us to just sell sell the handgun. That guy has a dynamite. I, I'm trying to shoot it away from him, but he was, that is a lot of damage. Don't like how shooting this thing in the head is not a... Lot of medium. I guess I think I get what I'm supposed to do. Um... But it's difficult to know, because not every enemy has a uh... Plagueus, uh... It's so, it's so stupid, though, because not, not every enemy has a plagueus, uh, in, and yet... Unless they all do, maybe they all, all have it, but shit. Alright, uh... I guess every enemy does have a plagueus, but it's hard to... Let's see. Burning to death? See, I don't know, like, if I blew his head off, would that have counted as, maybe certain enemies... Because I was thinking, it's like, is this at a point where it's like, uh, do certain enemies have, um... Do, do certain enemies have the plagueus thing, or is there only like... Or, or do they all have it, but yet, uh, some of them, it's, it's more pronounced than others? Pretty much once we get through this, it's uh, once we get the... I would say when I get to the fork, go left, innit? I mentioned following false number of enemies, uh, when the pass starts, take the left side, watch out for the enemy, there are very dynamite. Next, mentions about, after the right takes me into the uh... This is the way out. See if I can stink up on this boat. Pretty hard top step into its head. So I think only certain enemies can have the plagueus. Oh, there's, I think, there's someone up there. Okay. Let me just tap him. He did attack, I don't know what it was. I'll try and deal with this guy. I think I'm supposed to hit this way. Yellow, I feel. And yellow, that should be really useful, I can find this. Wait. Treasure here. Look how I missed that treasure. Unless that's on the way, that might be on the way, uh, is it on the way? I don't know, like... It says... Oh, it's like H from a bot. Wait a second, why couldn't I, why couldn't I just... There. Next up is, uh, follow the path to the end. I mean, climb the ladder to do copy here. And... More yellow symbols, I guess that's... So this time at least we know that there's... This time at least we know that there's three... Three symbols that need to... Just not two. Still gotta worry about the guy that's up here, but he might potentially... Oh. I can't see him. Who is? That is a... X. Jeez, over there. Um, I didn't remember that. Where are you? There was like an X, another thing in there. Anyone else up here, so it was an X? A... Is the way up? My up is here, like an X? XO and then... And pretty much after that, we then... Uh... I can wave back soon. Food. This one's the last one. Uh, first one was like an X. One? One, two, and then the other one, I guess. So I'm missing... I needed one of the other symbols. But that? What's the other symbol? I'll head down this way just to see what this... There might be a clue. Because, uh... Okay, so it's the atom, the atom moon. Atom moons. Uh, this is the one I forgot to put in. Oh, had a juke out here. Uh, gonna have... Been more coming from somewhere else? Addups to it. Only certain enemies can turn into the... Only certain enemies can turn into the... Uh, the plagueus. Oh. Alright, so the other one's that atom moon. So we said number one was the... Two is this, and number three is this. Yeah, postates, good. Now we have the... Now I have to go to the ship. Uh... Back to the church we go. Um... Now we've got to head back to the... Now we have to head back to the mural cave, which is like... There's more of you? I dealt with all these guys. Oh no. At least those things can... I dealt with these enemies here. I guess there was more enemies that were gonna spawn. I guess more enemies were gonna spawn if, uh, that's like... But I already went back here, I'm questionable. Back to the boat. Uh, back to the mural cave. I believe is... Should be the next, uh, yeah, should be the next, uh, just going this way. Should be the next, uh... Where the next? Here. Now we put, I think, both things in. Now we put both, um... Heads in there. Which is probably hidden. Yep. I don't think it matters which... I might put on where? Merchants again. Now I think we can take that back to... We need to head back to the church now, I think. That is. Uh, quickest way is back to the merchant area. I gotta find my way up here. Way up to the, and we want to do... Alright. Now we head back to... Uh, we're gonna head back to the church here. Turn around and... Oh. Have we... Traverse, very good. Also bad to revisit, um... Merchant here as well. See if I... Uh, I don't need to repair the knife, it's still good. Lot of nothing. For everybody. Uh... Uh... So now, back to the quarry. If we're all leaning back to the quarry, there's gonna be another wave shrine that we can... Okay, so this one, this one, right here. Uh, wait, he... Butterfly land. Actually, I'm just noticing this now, why are you still picking these up? I'm full now. Um, I think it's replacing them. Okay, so like, I guess, um... Oh, I don't know, I'm still picking up items. Uh, so next things are possible. Okay, that's working. Everything else here will be pretty much done. Oh, okay, this is a... I remember this, sorry. Swipe, son? Okay, it's giant. Alright, all I guess is shooting at its head is... Something gonna be the... That's the thing, dude. Makes more sense to me. There's never health bar, I don't know how the hell I'm doing. Oh, okay, has a... Yes. Alright. Uh, now I... I gotta shoot the thing out of the bag. Finally, it was that easy. Maybe it's... Okay, I don't know if I did that, or melee? Oh, that's a... I do like that they have that there, where it's like, uh, other than... Randomly flying around. And there's supplies lying around here as well. And there was nothing here, but, oh, okay, now there's a whole bunch of stuff. It's the dog that'll be helped. The dog that helped us, uh, sorry, it's the dog that'll be helped out. Uh, that was a lot of damage. Uh... I'm trying to grab all these supplies that I saw. I wanna grab all these supplies. And the dog is gonna wreck the guy, I guess?
Because I could use it.
I need to get out of here. I shoot its head again, I guess? Okay, so the dog is gonna provide a distraction. Okay, so I think I get this, probably. So we have to shoot the head of the, uh... Shoot the head of the giant until it, uh... Brings out the... Thing again? Now, it's down again? Wait, did we win or...? Oh, no, we didn't. Okay, so he's actually like helping itself with the charging. Has fallen? Yep, go play again? Last match, wait. I've gotta... I've gotta learn to dodge. Also, we're getting a bunch of other three items now. We're all taken. Uh... Second, I can combine these together. I guess it's... Set the... This people are getting plenty of ammo this way. I ran right towards the dog. I was supposed to run the opposite way, I decided to run towards the dog. Uh, I need to run away. Alright, is this the end of the fight? Alright, is this the end of the fight? I've got a yellow doggy blood. Uh, let's go around and check to see. Uh, cause I did miss some... Okay, so there's, this area here I have not explored yet, so there must be something that I can do, um... And when it's the feet of the corrugates open, I estimate to... Church, uh... And then we can place the insignia on the church door. There actually is an area here that I have not explored apparently. Although is that blocked off now, I guess? Cause that, I, I also just realized that dog bit the giant, so is he gonna be infected now? Alright, so I'm gonna head back to, so either head back to the church, which is where we're going, but there's no other... Uh... Head back to the church. So made a way back to the church where you will, uh... Able to... Yeah, we have to save. This area should be cleared because we're pretty... Fading everything in here. Don't have any new enemies here, but, uh... If there is, it's fine, we just, um... I shouldn't, they're not gonna give us any enemies right after a boss fight. And it seems like we're gonna get into the next boss. Uh, once we get to... Church. Okay, so it is unlimited, how does many, uh, levels we've won? Name doesn't seem familiar. Hey, oh, that's right, there's a... Dog around here, so... Get this. Why is he not shooting at the dog? Now we just, uh, hit back. Gonna make a saving here, I'm gonna hold it for... We have to go to do this anyway, I can't remember. Uh... And I can, like, here, you know? Like, the, we're not using, I don't think I have a small key on me. No, I don't. We, we're coming back into here, you know? Gonna save you. Alright, so we are, uh, nearly at the end of chapter four, it looks like, we just beat a boss fight. Making quite a bit of progress, which is nice, and doing a bunch of other stuff, and we'll see how everything goes, but, uh... I will end up here for the stream. Uh, I'm really enjoying this so far, um, and we'll see how everything goes in the future with this as well. With that being said, uh, be sure to like and subscribe. Every like, comment, subscription, viewing this video gets a bit closer to my translation. Hope some of my content for you all, this content become more accessible and easy to find. I uploaded my past plat reacts, as well as Let's Plays and Let's Plays YouTube channel. Putting Five Cross Six, Zephu, The Quarry, Resident Evil 2 Remake, Octopath Traveler, Lego Star Wars: The Scrabble Saga, Upstream Quirky Dog, Crisis Core, Final Fantasy, Seven Union, Pathed, Destroy, Miles Avengers, Dark Witch Anthology, The Devil and Me. Uh... Days Gone, Resident Evil 3 Remake, Bloodborne, Shadow Fallen Order, Lycra Dragon, Edition, or this game. For the future, the best way to watch my videos is to either, um... Uh, watch live, or I can upload it onto YouTube, cause I may work for you as well. Uh, I'm working on a, a pass segment for games that I have the plat trophy for, as well as a switching things up segment for games that I have the... Twitch, and I'm also working on a World Free Sin, Microsoft Speedrun, which, uh, I was also able to work on the Quarry one review as well, uh... Even though it's taking forever. Um, I upload it onto YouTube, cause I have a seven day limitation, my videos are permanently deleted. Uh, you also get enough catch wanna go live if you're watching on YouTube. Follow me on Twitch, uh, get your followers, I've been doing Octopath Traveler, Gajero, Speedrun, and we're also Rich Billet, which means get my translation as well. Get to make a bunch of subscriber emotes and incentives to help support me going forward into the future as well. And, uh... You'll also get enough catch wanna go live if you're watching on, uh, Twitch. Follow me on Twitch, be enough catch wanna go live, and Twitch, add me on Discord, I have essential info to my friends' Discord server. Close to 2000 members, still going strong, plenty of games to discuss there as well. I'm very active there, and you'll also get enough catch wanna go live if you're watching, well. So with all that said, Bruce the Day Knight, wherever you all are, and I will see you later.